Thank you. We're going to open this with our Emperor Ben Dylan. We have the, uh, invitation by, led by Matthew and Ashley Park. This is our little dedication for what we've been through this week, the past two weeks. It's a purpose. You've been a good young man.
God will welcome you to join us this week.
Thank you. Amazing Grace.
Amazing Grace, how sweet your sound has saved the rest of my life. I once was lost, but now I am. Was blind, but now I see. What grace that taught my heart to fear. Grace, I feel relief. How precious is that grace of yours. The Lord has promised to me his word. My hopes are cured. He will my shield and portion me as long as my fears. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
One person here might just have. Thank you. And we're going to go to the page of agents. Mr. Sonny Hall, you're in the place here.
Page of Legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the people who wrote call please.
Lauren Frazier.
Here.
Gary Kerr.
Here.
Sonny Hall.
Here.
Bill Melton.
Here.
Doug Beakers.
Here.
Cheryl Hill.
Here.
Dana Picken.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Daryl Heath.
Here.
Tony Hopper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Angie Hearn.
Here.
Don Patton.
Here.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston. Board plan.
Here. Number four, number one action. Thank you. Number one. Please, this is number five, approval of the agenda. Emotion. Emotion of this data.
Thanks.
Kenneth Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Here. No. This is a citizen. Again, but I'd like to ask everybody, I let it get a little longer than I would have ever had. A lot of speaking, but I think there's some good details that I found. I want to ask you firstly for the time going on here, let's try to reduce it to get to serious business and let's, let's try to get everybody home safe and do our duties at home. First one I have right here to speak is Mr. Jim Burns, born.
My name is Jim Moore. I'm from District Two. I want to speak tonight about item thirty, resolution twenty. On the seventh sixteenth of last year, the highway department was under water. Around a week ago, many pieces of highway equipment, the highway department equipment were out on Wild Road at midnight, cleaning up after a bad tornado on helping out our neighbors who were devastated. This was an act of God. What if the highway had been flooded that night? Another act of God. I ask for a vote to approve the purchase of the territory property, vote to get a major county facility out of the swamp and on the dry land and to ensure that this never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Debbie Cowell, please.
I want to apologize if I get out of hand, okay? I want to talk to you about Co-Red. On Monday, March the second, at ten forty-six p.m., I received a text message and a phone call from Co-Red on my phone stating that the NWS issued a severe thunderstorm warning and then was issued at ten forty-five until eleven thirty. At eleven oh-two, I received another message from Co-Red saying the NWS had issued tornado warning from eleven oh-two to eleven forty-five. This happened approximately four miles from my house and I heard it. On-SOFT provided ninety-one hundred phone numbers, both cell phones and landlines to the EMA director in August or September of two thousand nineteen, along with contact information of their IT person, Krista. Instructions and scripts were provided to the recorder to be reported by the EMA for a massive one-call test to those ninety-one hundred numbers that our county was covered by Co-Red. This service is free and needed to be done to clean up the data that On-SOFT has for our county. This means if number, if no, if numbers were no longer active within our county, they could be removed. On-SOFT will also take any phone numbers, both landlines and cell phones that our eight-nine-one board has and incorporate those with one call. Those haven't been provided to On-SOFT, this massive one call still hasn't been done, even though the contract was signed in two thousand nineteen, August. My phone started ringing Tuesday, March the third at six a.m. from both ends of the county, stating that they didn't receive no notifications from the north or the south end of our county. People were stating that I had solicited money for a worthless system. Any system is only as good as the operator that's in control of it. The only people that have or in control of Co-Red was the EMA director and the mayor. I received a call from the E-nine-one, uh, from an E-nine-one board member that afternoon that asked me, what was the status of Co-Red and why it wasn't launched? My reply to him, that he needed to ask the EMA who oversaw launching it and explain to one call that has not, the call, one call, the massive one call has not been done, even though that had been given to the EMA. That person informed me that Scott Hill had controlled Co-Red the previous week to launch it. I want to ask, did Scott Hill, the week before the tornado hit on March the second, if he had control to be able to launch Co-Red at all?
No.
Okay. I told him, I, I told the nine-one-one board member that I believed he did not. The Henry County EMA announced on their page at six fifty-two p.m. the night of March the second that he would be opening up the school as a storm shelter at eight p.m. for all Henry County residents. There was no coordination, there were no shelters available for our county or any communication where residents could go. There was no coordination or communication shelters in our county for, for the acronym or worse supplies that they dropped off or central location for volunteers to go to the earthquake, what was needed and where to go into teams in order to help everyone. This is the responsibility of the EMA who has been in this position for ten years and has trained for that day on March the second of two thousand twenty. A use of Co-Red for the sending false information on the storms such as where to get supplies and who to contact if they fail. Co-Red didn't fail, the EMA failed. Co-Red saves lives when it is used and activated. Smoke detectors work, but if they don't have new batteries in them, they'll fail. As of March the fourth of two thousand twenty, our county has five hundred and sixty-one off-ends for Co-Red and almost four hundred for weather warnings out of sixteen thousand. Co-Red is free to everyone in our county, which must sign up and enter your information and download the mobile app and hit skip when asked you if you want a managed account. Everyone needs to register and download this app. The Benton County Electric Company has been putting a notice at the bottom of every burns bill since December of twenty nine, twenty nineteen, and I want to show you. Their IT guy went to an orientation with our EMA director, and I was told that he wasn't impressed with Co-Red and he thought it was worthless, that it wouldn't do us any good. I immediately contacted the IT guy at the electric company and took, got him John's phone number, John Abrezyzy from Co-Red, On-SOFT contacted him. After an hour on the phone with John, their IT guy was convinced, and he said from now on, he's going to put this on all of the electric bills, it's at the bottom, to tell you how to go onto Co-Red. That was after an hour and after going to training with our EMA director. I didn't sell Benton County a bunch or solicit money for a bunch of goods, useless goods. The funds to pay for Co-Red were the following. The city of Camden contributed, contributed two thousand dollars. The Benton County Electric Company contributed a thousand dollars. Waste management contributed twenty-five hundred dollars, and the rest was given by the E-nine-one board. Same nine-one-one board that told me for ten years they couldn't fund Co-Red. This system is designed to have multiple uses, such as the highway department, the sheriff's department, the electric company, the Department of Education, the city of Camden, the water department, the street department, and et cetera. Other uses, users can be added depending on what we want to utilize it for. This isn't meant to be kept under a bucket and not utilized by multiple people for multiple situations. Last year, semi trucks were turned over on the interstate and it was closed, and during that time, a barge almost hit the bar, the bridge going to Johnsonville. If it wasn't for the quick assistance of Norman Frazier and his employees in the Benton, uh, Benton County, could have been completely cut off except by Carroll and Hen, and Henry Counties. Co-Red wasn't activated that day, however, John and Co-Red saw it on the national news and contacted me to see if it was activated. Benton County will have another tornado eventually, and we will, we will eventually have an earthquake. The question is not if this will happen, but when, and we have all the tools to handle this, but do we have the right people in charge? Who is over the EMA? The mayor appoints him and the commission approves him. The mayor, uh, who does he report to or who is over him?
About the EMA director.
Yes.
I am.
There was a lot of people that I would like to acknowledge that are actually involved in this disaster. I would like to ask about Carter to stand up in the highway department. His employees, I drove out there and he had the road closed, he had all of his employees out there, working around the clock, okay, to clear the roads. Is Raymond Barnes here? Raymond Barnes and the Benton County Electric Company employees worked, and also I saw three trucks from Lexington Electric Company that came and brought clothes and helped. Sheriff Christopher, I would like for you to stand up for us. Since our EMA director didn't coordinate, or we didn't have water bank supplies or anything, Kenny Christopher opened up the bases of the sheriff and collected and he put out on his page that you could drop off supplies and anything that you wanted to donate. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
The city of Camden Street Department, supervisor John Beasley of the city, street department employees went out there and helped clean up. They didn't have to, but it's called we are a community, and I still believe in that. Mayor Brett Lashley, he went out there the day after, he was in a seminar in Nashville the night before. Countless volunteers who have helped clean up and people that donate supplies, et cetera, to help the victims. I don't know what the solution he is here, but I do know this, we do not have currently, he has failed, the EMA has failed miserably, okay? And this has got to change. It has got to change. We need to have, Mayor Lashley and I have already spoken, we need to have public meetings where we can tell people and show them how to get registered for On-SOFT and how to get this working in our personal mode. Roseanne, I understand that your daughter's house was destroyed. Did they get an alert?
Yes, she did. From Co-Red.
Thank God. And I want, I want to say I'm truly sorry, and I'm very thankful that they got the alert. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I know you bring the very interesting initiative forward. Thank you very much. Mr. Hatner Smith, pepper.
I don't know if I'm doing it, but okay. All right. Well, I'm going to, um, thank everyone for, um, allowing me to speak tonight, but March is extension month, and due to unforeseen activities, our activities extension month are ceased and suspended based, based meetings until April thirtieth, but I did get the chance to get the proclamation and acknowledging that this is extension month. So, um, I want to tell everybody that we are very supportive in our community, and if you haven't been touched by an extension program, then you need to talk to me at some point. You can call me, um, or you can stop by the office, just let me know you're coming and I will get the door. But, um, extension does many things in our community. We educate youth, um, for adults, families, and communities, and farmers. We're all about making our community a better place to live, and I hope that you see that from our office and what we do for our community. Um, we're not just about agriculture and teaching kids how to bake cornbread. We teach life skills and change people's lives and make them good for our community. So, if you don't know what we do, please come by and see us.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Selfers, please.
Thank you.
Selfers, thank you for what work you're doing in this, this people at all, and so all of the corporations in town, I know it takes a lot of time to do this.
I could do it. I believe in the three ways of public speaking, be simple, be brief, and be gone. And I promise you, I would give you that. As chairman of the Audit Committee for Benton County, I'm privileged to give us our two thousand and nineteen county of the year report. I have previously submitted the report to the chairman and to the mayor, and a, a copy may have been inserted into your, all of your packets. It's five and a half pages, single spaced. I will not read that to you.
Thank you.
What we do in the Benton County Audit Committee basically is we are a reporting committee. We report to the Comptroller of the Treasury. We also report to the county commission on the financial condition, on management, on internal audit, and we particularly look at findings of the Comptroller of the Treasury every year from each audit's Benton County along with the other ninety-four counties. I am pleased that we can say that in the last three audits, two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and two thousand and nineteen, primarily because of the leadership in the mayor's office and the county commission, particularly giving, giving praise to Ashley Travis, who basically runs our purchasing and payroll in the mayor's office, we have received in two thousand seventeen, three findings, in two thousand and eighteen, one finding, and in two thousand nineteen, I'll call it a half of a finding. Uh, we almost, we nearly perfect in finding. In, in the fourth quarter of two thousand and eighteen, the Audit Committee decided that we need to address the issue of centralized purchasing and payroll. For the last thirty-eight years, the Comptroller has been recommending that Benton County engage in a centralized purchasing and payroll endeavor, like the fiscal act of nineteen eighty-one. I decided, we, we decided that we would look into that. We first had Jacob McNabb, who is our local auditor, uh, and he explained how we are transacting business now in Benton County. And then for the next, for the next six meetings, the first meeting being a meeting of the, uh, the Audit Committee with the county commission to give the previous, to give the previous year's report, for the next five meetings in two thousand and nineteen, we had, we had officers and experts and professionals from C-TAS, from the Comptroller's Office, from the County Commissioners Association, and from the Department of Education speak to us, and we encouraged all county commissioners, all department heads, and the citizens to come to our meeting, and I can, I can honestly say that we opened it up to the public and particularly to the county commissioners, who ultimately will have to make a decision as to whether or not we go into pure centralized purchasing and payroll. What we learned from these experts was that if properly employed, centralized purchasing can be economical and more efficient for a county. Uh, the question was, well, are some smaller counties, do they have centralized purchasing? The answer is yes. For example, Meeks County. Meeks County up in East Tennessee, population of eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine, has centralized purchasing. However, uh, there are some counties that have partial centralized purchasing, like Benton County, and, uh, some of them don't have it at all. Of a total either partial centralized purchasing or total centralized purchasing is employed in sixty-nine counties in the state of Tennessee. Here's the bottom line. The bottom line is, we feel like the Audit Committee, the consensus is that during calendar year two thousand nineteen, we gave the county commission, the department heads, and the local citizens an education, including an education of ourselves on centralized purchasing and payroll. We also are of a consensus opinion that at this particular point in time, it's too premature and politically is probably not feasible at all because of this. Number one, we are a product, we are a victim of our own success. First of all, we've got some audits that, that reflect that we have basically no finding. And so the consensus, particularly from the larger department heads, was that if it ain't broke, let's don't fix it. That said, we still feel like we need to look at that in the future, we need to, we need to continue our education, and we need to make sure that we properly engage, because one of these days, particularly when our budget increases, is probably, is in excess, about forty billion dollars, we probably would need centralized purchasing. Right now, the system is working. We are proud of what we're doing with the Audit Committee. We are completely non-political, we don't have an agenda, we report, we don't investigate. I can also say too, that we've got several different avenues where if somebody wants to, wants to complain about or make a presentation about fraud, waste, abuse, or theft, that we've got post office boxes, we've got, we've got email addresses, we've got phone numbers, and all of the Audit Committee members have their cell phones available. I can, I can say that we have had no records, zero records during calendar year two thousand nineteen of fraud, waste, abuse, or theft involving county employees, and that's a fact. So, barring any questions, that is my summation of calendar year two thousand nineteen. At the end of the case.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a signed original for the mayor, for the chairman, and also for, uh, Ms. Malin, our county clerk, for, for filing, and by the way, all of our, all of our agendas, all of our schedules, and all of our, all of our minutes are always in the county clerk's office if you, for public, for public dissemination, and you can get a copy of them if you'd like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ryan Hall.
I told you back in January that I would be back in March to give you an update on our county's reappraisal program. Uh, we have completed that. Uh, you should have received those change notices either this weekend or today. May, there may be a couple running behind, but, uh, any assessment change that's been made through our five-year reappraisal has been completed and you should be notified of that. Uh, we had a overall county increase, overall for the county, right under nine percent. Uh, this is not individual parcels. Uh, your parcel may have went down, your parcel may have went up, but overall, we are at nine percent increase after speaking to several of the surrounding counties. Uh, that's the lowest one that I've heard so far. I've heard twelve percent, fourteen percent, nineteen percent countywide average increases. So, I feel like that, uh, that's where we came in at. Um, the coronavirus has already affected us, uh, in our reappraisal, and it's already affected at least one taxpayer that I'm aware of right now, uh, because the state comptroller's office has completely shut down. Uh, any, anything, they are, they, uh, are not coming into the county to give us assistance. Uh, it's usually customary that they send two, uh, property DPA people in and to assist us, it was going to be starting from tomorrow until Monday, they have suspended all of that. So, we are basically on our own, uh, here in the assessor's office. Uh, myself and myself are doing the very best we can. Uh, I've already, uh, I already have one taxpayer that I'm going to have to try to work a private meeting out with, and, uh, I cannot even really find out a, a concrete time on that. So, as everyone is aware, we are very uncertain times, and so we will get through this the best way we can. Uh, we are here in the assessor's office to try to do what we can to help you. Uh, I can tell you from the sales that I have been monitoring, even from this month in March, consistently, we are coming in at twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand, I've even had a few come in at over a hundred thousand dollars more for the sale price than our brand-new two thousand twenty, uh, reappraisal price. So, uh, but, we deal with people on an individual basis and an individual parcel basis. Uh, what you receive in the mail is not a tax bill. Your tax bill is sent in October, and what you pay in taxes is determined by We report, we don't investigate. I can also say too, that we've got several different avenues where if somebody wants to, wants to complain about or make a presentation about fraud, waste, abuse, or theft, that we've got post office boxes, we've got, we've got email addresses, we've got phone numbers, and all of the Audit Committee members have their cell phones available. I can, I can say that we have had no reports, zero reports during Calendar Year 2019 of fraud, waste, abuse, or theft involving county employees, and that's a fact. So, barring any questions, that is my summation of Calendar Year 2019. At the end of the case. I have a, I have a signed original for the Mayor, for the Chairman, and also for Ms. Malin, our county clerk, for, for filing. And by the way, all of our, all of our agendas, all of our schedules, and all of our, all of our minutes are always in the county clerk's office if you, for public, for public dissemination, and you can get a copy of them if you'd like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ryan Hall.
I think Ms. Ward told you back in January that I would be back in March to give you an update on our county's reappraisal program. We have completed that. You should have received those change notices either this weekend or today. There may be a couple running behind, but any assessment change that's been made through our five-year reappraisal has been completed, and you should be notified of that. We had a overall county increase, overall for the county, right under nine percent. This is not individual parcels. Your parcel may have went down, your parcel may have went up. But overall, we are at nine percent increase after speaking to several of the surrounding counties. That's the lowest one that I've heard so far. I've heard twelve percent, fourteen percent, nineteen percent countywide average increases. So I feel like that, that's where we came in at. The coronavirus has already affected us in our reappraisal, and it's already affected at least one taxpayer that I'm aware of right now. Because the state Comptroller's Office has completely shut down. Any, anything, they are, they are not coming into the county to give us assistance. It's usually customary that they send two property DPA people in and to assist us. It was going to be starting from tomorrow until Monday. They have suspended all of that. So we are basically on our own here in the assessor's office. Myself and myself are doing the very best we can. I've already, I already have one taxpayer that I'm going to have to try to work a private meeting out with, and I cannot even really find out a concrete time on that. So as everyone is aware, we are very uncertain times, and so we will get through this the best way we can. We are here in the assessor's office to try to do what we can to help you. I can tell you from the sales that I have been monitoring, even from this month in March, consistently, we are coming in at twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand. I've even had a few come in at over a hundred thousand dollars more for the sale price than our brand-new 2020 reappraisal price. So, but, we deal with people on an individual basis and an individual parcel basis. What you receive in the mail is not a tax bill. Your tax bill is sent in October, and what you pay in taxes is determined by your tax rate. That is, every year, that is, that is decided. Now, I gave the update on the appraisal. Now, what am I going to be paying in taxes? That's the number-one question on everybody's mind. Overall speaking, not individually speaking, let me make that very, very clear. Overall speaking, the way it's set up, the certified rate, if passed and approved, overall, for the county, that brings in the same amount of revenue as 295 has brought us. And before I get in any further in that, I just wanted to make that point very clear. Individually, those are dealt with on an individual basis. What your out-of-pocket will be on each individual parcel, I cannot guarantee you that. There is no way that I can tell you that. Countywide speaking, the certified rate will bring in just about what 295 did. And before we get into the certified rate discussion, and I give you a preliminary number on that, I've asked Scott to set us up, this is a video from the Comptroller's website. I know there's a lot of confusion with the certified rate in reappraisal. This is the simplest explanation that I've been able to find, and the Comptroller has, has asked me to play this. So it's two minutes if we can watch this.
Meet Steve. This is Steve's house, and this is Steve's property assessment notes. If you own property in Tennessee, it's the job of your county assessor to figure out how much it's worth. Depending on which county you're in, an updated value for your property is determined every four, five, or six years during a process called a reappraisal. And since property values generally go up over time, there's a good chance that your house, commercial property, or land will be appraised at a higher value. Steve's property has gone up in value, so what does this mean for his property taxes? Here's the good news. Higher values during a reappraisal do not necessarily mean higher taxes. Tennessee law requires the state work with your assessor and county mayor to adjust your property tax rate. So when appraisals go up, your tax rate goes down. It's known as the certified tax rate. The concept is simple. The new certified tax rate will generate the same amount of tax revenues for your city or county as the amount billed in the previous year. Let's say all of the properties in Steve's community increased in value by an average of twenty percent. Steve's house also increased twenty percent, but thanks to the certified tax rate, he should pay just about the same amount in property taxes he paid last year. The only way the certified tax rate can be exceeded is if Steve's county commission or city council decides to hold a public hearing and adopt a new, higher rate. When you receive a new property appraisal, it helps to understand how you're protected by the certified rate. But pay attention to your local government meetings to know if leaders are thinking about exceeding it. Remember, the assessor values your property, the county commission or city council determines how much you'll pay in taxes.
Okay, so those watching on Facebook Live, I know sometimes there's volume issues. You can actually Google TN certified tax rate, and that should bring you to that YouTube link, and you can watch that for yourself. So, I guess the most important thing there is, appraisals go up, tax rates should go down. What will our tax rate, our certified tax rate wind up being? I will not have that number until, I hate to say this, but it's probably going to be July's commission meeting. We still have to go through this informal hearing time. We still have to go through our yearly county board, county board of equalization time, and that carries us through the first two weeks of June. So I will not actually be dismissing my county board hearings until that Friday. You guys will meet that Monday in June. So I don't, I think it's going to be probably impossible to get you that number. But I'm going to give you a ballpark figure tonight. This is not what our certified rate will be. Let me stress that. This is not our rate. I will submit the official rate to the cities of Big Sandy, the cities of Camden, and the county commission at that July meeting in form of resolutions. But we have, I've been advised by CTAAS, I've already been talking to the Budget Committee about this, they are fully aware of this. I do have a soft number of what we're looking at that we need to try to be breaking down to. Right now, that number is coming in at two dollars and seventy-six cents. Let me repeat that, two dollars and seventy-six cents. Just watch the explanation on there. This is not shorting the county if it comes in at that. It very likely could be lower than two seventy-six before we are, before this is all over. It could be a little higher than two seventy-six. The way CTAAS explained it to me, normally, this, this number should give us two or three cent fluctuation. Okay, so we are right now at a soft unofficial preliminary, used for budget purposes only, two seventy-six. If your appraisal has changed by quite a bit, you still may wind up paying some more in property taxes. If your appraisal went down, you, you probably still going to pay the same because it's all on the average, okay? I cannot speak individual parcels tonight. I'm only advising you as the assessor on behalf of the whole, the whole county. So I hope I haven't went too long tonight. I know there was a lot of discussion in the January meeting. We addressed rumors, we addressed a lot of things. I'm very thankful that that has not started back up again. We are doing everything we can here to help you on the local level with this coronavirus. We, we have no idea how that's going to affect our government functions moving forward, but we will, we'll take it as, as the good Lord puts it out to us, right? And as, as time comes. But just know that your local assessor's office is working very hard to answer your questions and to address any issues you have. But your taxes of what you pay in taxes has not changed at all at this point. Is there any questions that I can take? Quickly. Yes, ma'am.
If there was no change in your property value, you'll still get a notice, correct?
You know, I, I don't believe there were very few parcels that, I've got a stack of return envelopes where the addresses that we had was not correct. So I cannot promise that everybody received a change notice that, you know, we've got people that own property in Benton County from all over the United States. We're responsible to try, but if somebody moves across the road and they don't tell us about that, they may not receive the change notice. So no, ma'am, I cannot guarantee that in any situation you will, will or will not receive a change notice. But, but you can always, the Comptroller's website, TN Property Data, they should be updating that pretty soon. They've been holding those updates back because of these reappraisal numbers, because everything has been fluctuating so much. But, but you should be able to find out your current, and of course, you can always call us to see if you've not received a change notice, to see if something has changed.
Thank you. Mayor, just, and this is, just so you clarify, flashback five years ago. The certified rate handed down at that time, if I'm not mistaken, was two dollars eighty-two cents.
One, eighty-one cents.
Eighty-one cents.
Yes, sir.
And the county commission opted the following month, I believe, to raise taxes to two dollars and ninety-five cents.
That is correct, sir. Fourteen cent increase.
So we've gone five, five years with this two dollar ninety-five cent rate.
Yes, sir.
The Comptroller's valuation of the total property value is based off the two dollar ninety-five cent rate and not the two dollar eighty-one cent.
That is correct, sir. We have, the two dollars and ninety-five cents that people just paid their property taxes on in 2019, that is the number that they are using to base the certified rate. And if the county commission, and like you said earlier, we have no idea what this corona is going to do to our sales tax revenue. We have no idea about anything. We have, we're in uncertain times, uncertain times for sure. But the, the, the county stakeboard, I mean, the Stakeboard of Equalization will give me the official rate. And whatever they tell me, and I present that, if this body, this government body decides not to lock that in, I've heard talk about let's lower it a penny. You by law will not be able to lower it a penny this year. The Comptroller will not underfund the county. Also, the Love's Truck Stop, I addressed this in June. All new construction is money on top of the certified rate. Any new sales tax revenue. So the, the certified rate is not going to be every penny that we're going to get. We're going to get new money, just as we get every year in new construction. It will only, the certified rate will only represent the, the money that we had from last year at two ninety-five. Yes, back in line.
Okay. Last time it's two eighty-nine. We got two ninety-five, raised over, right? So right now, of course, my property taxes went up, that's fair, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Your appraisal went up.
Appraisal did. But, so if we keep that two ninety-five, then we're all going to be paying probably more taxes. Like, I'm at sixteen thousand dollars. So what, are we just, are we saying that we might stay right there to accommodate for our values going up? That we might keep this state rate? Is that what we might really be looking at? And keep the same down, refund our revenue coming in? And so, because now, like I said, sixteen thousand on mine, which you use twenty-five percent, if people want to look at it, you multiply that by four, tells you how much your value will be home. But you said we went up, what, nine percent?
Countywide average, nine percent, yes, sir.
Well, like I said, if we keep the two ninety-five, do we have now?
Yeah.
No, we have two ninety-five.
Is that correct? Our current rate is two ninety-five.
So keep that, or this new appraisal?
We don't want to keep that.
We don't want to keep that, right? And while we, make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
That'll be unbelievable.
If, and, and I have, like I said, nobody in this room knows what we're going to be able to do. I've had several commissioners make private statements to me. Their goal is to lock in the certified rate. If we are able to accomplish the new, that new rate, it will be something that I don't believe has been done in several reappraisal years. So it'll be something that we can be proud of. But, but if, if we kept it at two ninety-five, and my rate, and the rate was two seventy-six, that would be a, what is it, nineteen cent, nineteen cent increase.
Right. And higher appraisals of our property.
That's right. Appraisals go up, tax rate goes down. That's that part of that video that's very important.
That's standard.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ward.
Can you tell us how much you're bringing in now as opposed to two thousand fifteen on new construction?
No, sir, I, I cannot. I think I advised the Budget Committee last year. Of course, with the reappraisal number, our value went really up this year, you know, because, so I couldn't pull out my new construction number out of that. What I usually do is take my total appraisal, January first, 2018, and my January first, 2019, and subtract that, and that gives me my entire appraisal change, the bulk of that being new construction. But I think I advised the Budget Committee last year that we came in at about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars of new construction. I can say it appears we're going to have a really strong new construction this year with new houses, so that very well could be even more new construction money other than sixty, sixty-five thousand.
So if it's averaging somewhere close to that, you're looking at three hundred thousand over five years?
That's correct, yeah. See, if you take sixty times five, that's three hundred. That could be, that could very well be three hundred thousand dollars of new tax revenue in five years. But, you know, how, I mean, the economy, construction, things to really tank, and we, nobody.
I was just saying that that's three hundred thousand if we're going to have these new constructions happening. So we've already had pretty good increase in property taxes without raising property taxes.
Yes, sir. That's, and, and, and in that line of thinking, I would guarantee that our sales tax revenue has probably increased quite a bit too. So I think the Mayor's made several statements. Our county is pretty healthy overall. Like I said, we, we're praying that this corona doesn't really hurt, hurt governments and hurt people physically. But, but, let's, let's pray for that, and let's hope that we're still, that we're doing good. Mr. Ward, that is your question. Yes, sir.
Mr. Ward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ward. I did mean to go back. This is a very important issue, and I'm here, anytime you'd like us to have a private conversation, I'm here as their assessor. Ms. Dinger, you need to go.
No, I need to go. Can we turn that? Air down slightly. That needs to be here, and it's cold. Yeah, it's going right here.
That moves it down, Commissioner Form. Like speed, flicker. Just, Miss Roseanne.
Well, I want to try to say this without getting emotional. Last time I tried to speak, I got a little bit emotional about, um, when I don't, everything that happened to it so. But I want to say that this community really came together, you know, we're community strong, and just the first responders that came out, I mean, it was amazing. The rescue squad, the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Department, the city, the fire departments, and the Highway Patrol, and, and all those people were there just, you know, as soon as they could get there. And just the, the support of all the friends and the family, and the people that came out that day, I don't want to start naming names because I would not want to leave anybody out. But there were so many restaurants around town that brought food out there. And we even had the, the Sheriff's Department delivering water and food, and the Highway Patrol was even out there offering water. And it, it was just amazing how everybody pulled together and helped that day. And I just wanted to tell everybody how thankful our family is.
Roseanne, you got the best experience, man, by seeing what life could mean. Two kids walk out of that house, I mean, it's devastating, wouldn't, and I understand.
I'm thankful.
It changed my life a lot of ways, it's thrown and looking, and I just admire the young that you got.
I'm thankful every day that God, that they were safe.
Yeah, I know, too. That's, I found one of the hardest hits. They did about deliver your, he did about, just. See, if I didn't live through that, I'd just be not a family, I'd march on. Thank you. Anything further in the commission, hold on. Not, Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak?
I'll just address today's, you know, prayer was for Benton County and what we've been through, you know, for the last two weeks and what we're probably going to experience in maybe the weeks ahead. So I appreciate Ashley arranging that and the Arnold family's performance. I, I think we all need that every now and then. But I also want us to keep in mind, be mindful of the Carl Frazee family. We did have a casualty. We could have had more, and Roseanne protested to, to life share one minute, and it's just a hair, just a few feet away from not being there. So, so, you know, we're not immune to disasters and tragedies, and April is the tornado month. I mean, that's when we have most tornadoes in Tennessee. So we're not immune to disaster, but how we come together after a disaster is testimony to the great community that we live in. I also want everyone to be mindful of our county attorney here, Mr. Sean Johnson, who lost his nephew as one of the voters that went off to the Pickwick family. So again, you can see how that touches us as, as a county body and, and our prayers and thoughts are with you, Sean, and your family as well. To address Ms. Kyle's comments about Code Red, you know, I think we're, most of us are all proponents of that. I, I see a great value in that. I know from interviewing the residents of that community that was struck by the tornado that we have confirmed five families that said that they got that particular text or call in a manner that allowed them to react timely enough to save their lives. And, you know, it's always tragic when you lose a life, but I'm trying to focus on the lives that have been saved. It could have been much, 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 much worse to this community. And I just want you to be mindful that your vote and decision to support funding Code Red last year was a great first step. We've heard a lot of commentary about worse than sirens. You know, I think a lot of us are older, we're all used to the, to the old ways of, of notice, notification, which was the sirens. But the sirens would not have helped those people out on Malibu Road area and Bethel Church Road area that night. Code Red is a difference maker. I thank all of y'all for supporting that vote. I think we need to continue that relationship with Code Red. But for Ms. Kyle, we're going to get better. We're still in the learning process. We've learned a lot over the last two weeks of how we can improve. One of the decisions that I have made for our EMA department, and I'm going to make the decision of appointing a deputy because one man cannot handle the EMA responsibilities by themselves. And, and we're finding out that there's a lot more to emerge. And, and we're finding out that there's a lot more to emergency management than one person. And keep in mind that that person gets paid a salary of twenty-six thousand dollars a year, okay? So, you're not going to find a lot of people willing to step up to the plate and be an EMA director, take on the, the enormous work that's involved with that responsibility for twenty-six thousand dollars a year. So, I've opted to be able to identify that we need help. We need administrative and communications help with that department. And one of the resolutions that you have before you tonight is the appointment of a deputy. I felt like the IT director is the best option to, for a first start for the EMA. Code Red is essential. Communicating on Facebook is essential. Being a right-hand person to assist in the time of need so that our EMA director can be out in the field or wherever they need to be, that's just one less thing they have to worry about. They've got the right-hand person to do that. I still believe the EMA director needs a couple more deputies. The reason I'm bringing the resolution before you, though, is because I'm going to propose that there is some form of compensation for the deputy in the EMA department. Now, it's not much. I, I've probably anywhere from six to seven hundred and fifty dollars, somewhere in that range would be compensatory for someone that's going to be on call twenty-four, seven. But, already in this last week, we saw severe weather threatening this, this county. In the course of one day, this deputy secured six churches for, for shelters before the event. A shelter's no good after the event, okay? So, this person has done that, got the notifications out. The Facebook traffic on the Ben County EMA Facebook page went up fifteen hundred percent in one day. That tells you the power of communication and the importance it is to our community. So, you have a resolution to approve this appointment. I'm going to make the appointment whether or without to approve. The reason I want your buy-in is I believe, uh, there's compensation that needs to be budgeted for our next fiscal year. What the budget committee decides that should be, I leave up to you. But, whether we need a deputy, I believe is a no-brainer. In fact, I need, I think we need a couple more deputies to assist our EMA director. I can place criticism, and I can place, uh, uh, you know, accolades to this individual. But, I do know that we have a failed model in our EMA department. If one man does not need to be running it, and it needs to be someone who can do command and control in the time of an event. The best way we can set them up for success is to be able to support them properly. Deputies are going to make the difference here. So, that's why I had put that in your, I'll get with you in just a minute, Mr. Ward. But, that's why I made that particular, uh, appointment via a resolution. Uh, getting to our UT and TSU ag extension. Anyone who has worked with UT, uh, or the ag extension office knows the value that it has to our community. Uh, Heather Smith and her crew, I think, are second to none in all of West Tennessee. We should be very thankful that we have them. Uh, y'all know that I want to read a proclamation. I want this for the record. One, I don't know if you have a copy, but I do want this for the record. And, uh, basically, it's UT TSU Extension Fund, and this is why I'm going to read the proclamation. So, county event proclamation by the Ben County Mayor. Whereas the University of Tennessee is Tennessee's land grant university, and has a three-part mission in teaching, research, and extension. And whereas extension is the outreach arm of the university and an integral part of the land grant mission, extending the knowledge and expertise of the university to the people of Tennessee through education delivered by agents, specialists, volunteers, and non-ninety-five counties of the state. And whereas extension is a valuable resource for helping citizens to solve problems, providing real-life solutions in the places they live, work, and play through hundreds of programs. And whereas extension's efforts are based on local needs, research, and a commitment to improve the quality of life. Whereas extension's educational programs and 4HU development, agriculture and natural resources, family and consumer sciences, and community and economic development produce substantial returns to the state. Whereas using research, questionnaires, observations, and sales records, an economic impact was estimated at more than six hundred and eighty-seven million from January one, two thousand nineteen, through December thirty of two thousand nineteen for statewide educational programs. Whereas a recent assessment indicates that every dollar in public funds invested in an extension program returns an estimated nine dollars and thirty-one cents to the people of Tennessee. Now, therefore, I, Brett Laxley, Mayor of Ben County, do hereby proclaim March as UT TSU Extension Fund, and encourage all of our citizens to participate in the extension's educational programs and learn how our local extension benefits them. So, that's for, uh, the record. One, please, please, put that in there. Now, for the audit committee, uh, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for there. Again, I can remember when it was ten findings in one year. And now, it has gone down to basically a hairline fraction of a finding, which I believe if we probably would have argued hard enough on it, the comptroller might, may have forgiven us. So, we were that close to a perfect audit, which has never been achieved by this county. That is why I proposed the salary rates for, for Ashley here. She's worth her weight and go, and probably underpaid at that. I guarantee you, she, her reputation is very high amongst the, uh, C-Tas community and our fellow, her fellow peer network throughout West Tennessee. We're lucky to have her. I think she does a great job. And again, I commend y'all for supporting that, because that's the difference. When you can go from ten, ten findings within a three-year period, down to really a hairline fraction of finding. So, we're hoping that next year, we will have our first perfect audit, and be a lot to celebrate. Of course, you mentioned the central lives purchasing and payroll, uh, process. I will continue to, uh, I guess you want to say, support that and propose that as something we eventually need to migrate to. But, it's only going to be effective if everyone's on board and embraces it. And I'm not going to push that on department heads and elected officials that's not ready for it. But, it doesn't mean that you won't hear me continue cheerleading that particular, uh, accounting concept, and I believe would be hugely beneficial, uh, to our county. Uh, we talked about the coronavirus a little bit, and just because we're on Facebook Live, and I know the public is watching this, uh, you know, this could be our last public meeting as we know it in the form that we're presenting it, okay? And as we know more about the virus, and more and more states of emergencies come down, uh, you'll be the first to know, once I know. And we may have to modify somewhat how our public gatherings are conducted. Uh, we can probably try to keep it under fifty people. Now, they're recommending ten people. It's going to change our way of life a little bit, of how we do business as a government. There will be more forthcoming on this. I just want you to be prepared that next month's commission meeting could be drastically modified. So, uh, I'll let chairman plant communicate that to you, whether we just have to handle administrative matters only, like the, and keep other resolutions for later time. But, again, just be prepared that we may have to alter our behavior a little bit on how we conduct public meetings in, in the future. As, uh, Mr. Ryan Hall presented to us, he's, he's been very informative over the last few meetings. Uh, one thing he forgot was that we added five hundred thousand dollars worth of value back to the community through our, uh, option, uh, land options that we conducted last fall. I believe the Love's Truck Stop will add over ten million dollars of property value. Uh, I know their construction project's around fourteen million dollars. So, uh, you know, right now, we've got a lot of building in, in our county. We were on target for probably about a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, just our take out of sales taxes. That wasn't the school state, but that was the county and city of Big Sandy in Hampton State. That's four hundred thousand dollars tax injection back into our community. The coronavirus is obviously going to alter that number. So, we need to get comments and have the debate committee going forward. Uh, times are good, but maybe we need to take a little, uh, stroke of caution here going forward. From the mayor's office, my recommendation is going to be, if the state tells us what the certified tax rate is, we need to do everything we can to stay at that certified rate. Okay? So, I believe financially, times are good. No need to panic, and we're very solid financially. And I hope things are going to continue to get better. That's all I have.
Thank you. Lose a light out of number nine, remember the minutes, in motion?
Motion, no.
Oh, the bill, in the second.
Day and a second.
Day and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Period, light out of ten, for the blundered UTers.
Did we get those in our package?
Man.
Did we get that in the package? I didn't find it in mine. Yeah, I didn't see it in mine, I couldn't figure it through, I have to say that.
Have a motion, but.
Sure, I'll motion. Second, confirm.
Ms. Hearn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here, out of eleven, resolution for the EMA Deputy Director for a four-year term set to expire March first of two thousand twenty-four. Motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Twenty-second, Mr. Victor. Roll call vote.
Question.
Discussion.
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 Um, the mayor said that the EMA's director's salary is twenty-six thousand. Does that not match by the state?
Thirteen thousand is from ground.
Okay, okay, I knew there was a matching share.
It costs the county thirteen thousand once we're reimbursed by that grant.
Okay, so, it is twenty-six in total. Um, you said that you have the authority to create a position and fund it without approval by the county commission.
I have the authority to create the position, to fund it is your authority. But, he is not funded through June thirty. So, whether he goes unpaid or not is up to him. He could say, I'm not going to work for free. But, I will propose some type of salary supplement for him in the next budget.
I'd like to make an amendment to this, uh, resolution. I'd like to get, remove my name from, uh, this, this resolution.
I have a second, Mr. Danny. Just a second.
Well, it seems like, uh, if Mr. T is probably, uh, should be looking and taking his retirement. If he can't run the EMA, I would think we'd let him go ahead and retire and put somebody in there. If, if you're going to get somebody that's, uh, that's leading the place, they may as well have the title and the pay.
Don't we need to go on? Do we have a question?
Just one more, give a poll.
No.
I have a motion, four more seconds. I think we're going to move, all in favor, move it, Mr. Harper, move it.
Aye.
Period, move, just a second. Okay, go ahead.
Then at the bottom, it says, uh, four-year term expires twenty twenty-eight.
Are you making a motion to change it to twenty twenty-four?
I can.
Okay, and I'll second it.
Have a motion by Ms. Jenny, taken by Ms. Danny, to change it back to two, twenty twenty-four. All in favor? Change upon the date.
All right, I have a ask. Uh, I have yet to see the resume for Mr. Hill. Has it physically been introduced in our package?
It should be in the package.
Sir?
It should be in your.
I have not seen a, is anybody seen a physical resume?
No.
All right, I've seen some certificates, but I haven't seen a physical resume. Last, last month, Mr. Hill come to me and asked me if I'd support him. I asked for a resume. I've asked the mayor's office for a resume, and I've got a list of requirements for education for the job. And I would appreciate a resume before I could vote for somebody. You know, I'm also looking to see if a public notice went out for this position to be advertised. Because I do not know this gentleman's experience other than a handful of certificates, okay? I've got over half the same certificates that he's got. And I know what it takes to get them, and I don't mean to discredit him, but anyway.
I second what he's saying.
The, all right, also, the job scope. I would like to see that, job scope, before I can support this position. There needs to be a limiter on what he can and cannot do without us just giving him and the mayor full reign of this position, in my opinion. So, I rest.
Anybody else, Sam, Chris, Dave, I'm going to talk more, so go ahead, Mr. Danny. Somebody else?
Second. Um, this is the only resolution that I have people call me and say no. That's all I can say.
Mr.?
Um, I have also, um, had my constituents calling, uh, and is, is against the resolution.
May two, or a tall.
I think if we need to hire one or more deputy EMA directors, we need to go about this properly, like any other position in the county. We need to decline the job, we need to advertise it, and give anyone who is interested, that has the experience, the opportunity to compete for said job. And then you can, you know, base that on all that stuff. But, we need to follow protocol, you know? I asked for a bookkeeper for years. I couldn't have just said, well, I'm tired of not, them not approving it, and gone and hired a bookkeeper. You know, we do things in the order they're supposed to be done.
And for the record, I do support that we need somebody to assist that position. That position does need more than one. Yeah, I would just want to say, uh, keep in mind, uh, we've got a few more appointments up tonight for audit committee. I believe we've got some for the animal shelter board. I don't know if you're going to ask for their resume or not. Secondly, this particular position, let's take the animal shelter director. It's my, it's my prerogative to appoint an animal shelter director. It's my prerogative to appoint a solid waste director. This is not the EMA director we're appointing tonight. And if it was, it would be my choice, okay? Now, I may advertise that, because I want to get the best person, and it would be a full-time job. A deputy is not being funded at a full-time position, okay? But, we have to ask, ask ourselves is, okay, let's say no to it. Let's have a tornado next week. We've got one person to handle it. Are y'all okay with it? Because we almost had one this week, and we had severe weather. And literally, within one day, this person secured six shelters that should have been secured ten years ago, okay? And also, at least communicated something to the public in a timely fashion via the proper means, the EMA Facebook page. So, that's the value of having some type of administrative assistance. This person's not going to go out there and he's not even going to assume the, the, if something happened to our EMA director, he is not going to be an interim EMA director. But, he's going to be, he and others like him, if we determine we need a couple more deputies, are going to be a continuity factor that that position needs. Because there's no given guarantee that the EMA director's going to be here one day and not long the next. So, who's there to mind the, mind the show? What kind, what kind of tools do we have in place as a county that ensures we don't have hiccups, and we don't have a drop-off? Now, my ulterior choice is, I'm going to replace the EMA director, okay? But, I'm, I, I want to give our EMA director a running start. How, maybe the problems we've had with the EMA department is this, we, okay, we've not. How, maybe the problems we've had with the EMA Department is this, we, okay, we've not given them what you call the proper tools to be successful. And so, at twenty-six thousand dollars a year, we're not gonna attract a lot of, I wanna say, expertise or even energy. Mr. Key is in his prob, I think, late sixties? You know, it's probably a job for someone with a lot more energy. So if we're gonna continue the twenty-six thousand dollar a year model, we're gonna have to have some type of administrative support, communication support, field support, something that allows our EMA Director the ability to do his job a lot better. This is the least costly way to do it. You know, six, seven hundred dollars a month is a very economical proposal, which is, would make him a part-time employee, and why I would not advertise that to the general public. If it was a full-time job with benefits, by all means, I would, I would've advertised that. But, our EMA, again, keep in mind, I'm totally fine, if y'all don't wanna support it, that's fine. But we could have a tornado tomorrow, the next week, the next week, and we set up to handle it. Now, I know who's been calling everybody, the volunteer fire departments have been calling everybody, but they're against it for some reason. But if the volunteer fire departments want to become a county entity, let them make a proposal. Because right now, I don't have any control over the county, the volunteer fire departments. EMA is a county department. But since our volunteer fire departments are so, I guess, uh, prepared for everything, I wanna ask them what their plan is to handle coronavirus. Okay? Because fighting fires are not the only emergency element we have out there. We could have an earthquake, we could have a chemical spill, tornadoes, a lot of things that don't encompass fighting fires. And why our E, why the county has an EMA Department? Because it's supposed to look at the big picture and prepare for all threats, uh, that could be posed to this county.
Doesn't this individual need to be...
Try to make, please, try. You know, hold up, please, just be recognized, please, try. One moment, you can come up and argue with this people, but you know, you just don't jump up in the meeting and start talking, wait. I'm recognizing him.
Keep rambling.
Go ahead, Mr. Daniel, go ahead.
So, so basically, what I'm saying is, I may, I took an action, there is no time to waste. And this was the best stopgap measure that I could think of, without tossing the county an arm and a leg to hire a full-time individual. That someone who's qualified to do the duties that we charge them with, which is basically code red, emergency notifications, administrative assistance, and, and basically, public communications. I need that from my office. The EMA Director is not gonna be able to handle everything at every given moment. So I actually think that this is a good measure to, to protect ourselves, uh, for future disasters.
Miss Jenny?
We asked Mr. Hill at the meeting how we thought he was gonna manage his time, because we know he already had other tasks of the county. And I'm still, my, my concern is still, how will he manage to do all the roles that he's asked to do?
Well, all of his roles are really a part-time role. But he's, but he's given us twenty-four-seven access to his skills and abilities and experience. Now, we could, I could pull the resolution, and we could up his pay for, uh, IT Director. But I'm still going to charge him with the duties of assisting EMA. Okay? I'm not gonna make Mr. Key do everything that that office, the demands of that office entail, because he's, he's just, first of all, he's not capable of doing everything. And we have to begin restructuring the model of EMA. We're operating on a ten-year-old model that's not set up right, and slowly but surely, we're gonna, we're gonna alter.
I'm hearing you say that Mr. Key is not qualified or not capable of doing all the duties. And, to me, he's already stretched thin with the ACO and other responsibilities. Do you think he's going to be able to do everything that he's asked to do in his time, and take care of our county in a crisis?
Well, because his role also, I guess, entails a lot of IT experience, they kinda marry and mesh together. Uh, his job as an ACO is simply a contracting position, he's, you know, we, we do him on an as-needed basis, and we're still looking for an ACO. He's only agreed to be an ACO until we find someone to be able to assume that duty, but he had qualifications for it, and that's why to use him as a stopgap measure for the animal shelter.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Victor?
In looking at this, uh, in looking at this, uh, resolution, and from what I've heard, Mr. Key has got to the point that he's really incapable of running the EMA. So I don't see any sense in just getting somebody that knows a little bit and under him. If we're gonna do anything, ask Mr. Key to resign, and get somebody in there that can lead and do the job.
Well, my, my response to that is, uh, when, before I became mayor, Mr. Key and I sat down, all right? And, uh, I committed to giving him two years. Because first of all, I'm, I'm like Mr. Fowler, I'm an NCO, being in the military. We build people, we build leaders. So my first inclination was, maybe if we got in there and worked with that department, and looked at the model, and set that department up to function effectively, then maybe the complaints on Mr. Key would go down. Like I said, I would, I'd love to be able to sit here and, and say, maybe Mr. Key's not up for the job, but maybe we've not set Mr. Key up to be successful. That would be our fault, that would be the county's fault, and that's why, this is an element that helps Mr. Key focus on what he needs to do, and that's command and control and the power of the men. The, the administrative element frees him up from things that, that, that he doesn't need to be worried about, he needs to be focused on the threat. So now he's got the administrative support to help him.
He's also supposed to be able to send people and notify, uh, notify them and get the work done.
And, and that's why I said, our model is...
If you can't do that, we don't need any men there.
Our model is, but you know what? Who are we gonna replace Mr. Key with? We're, we're only gonna try...
What I'm saying is, if you're gonna put somebody in to help him, put somebody in that's capable to move him into his place. And if you're gonna put somebody there that, in that position, he needs to put in a, a resume, and we need to look at it.
Mr. Mayor, we, uh, actually, hold this for now, but I'd like to, uh, Mr. Hill to do a resume for, for Rachel, Rachel or Richard, could just put...
And, and we'll, we can do that, but I just don't wanna dress your, dress your... The more people that we begin making assistance, again, that's a payroll out. We need to compensate them to be the number-two man. The deputy is not designed to be the number-two man, it's more like this, to assist their mission. Now, uh, again, if we set Mr. Key up better, perform, maybe, maybe we don't have the complaints that we do. I know Mr. Key knows volunteer fire fighting very well, he's got, he's got a lot of experience. I'd love to be more critical, but I'm, but the model's wrong. So I'm gonna try to fix the model, and then hold him to a higher expectation and accountability. But right now, we're just not there. We have to do something that ensures, if we have another event tomorrow or next week, that we're prepared for it. And that's why I went ahead and proposed this, to get this going, because I, I just don't, I, I, you know... You know, we can't delay when, when you talk about the public safety. We can't think about what we're gonna do. Uh, we, that takes time to set up the proper model. But I'm, I'm totally fine, if this puts y'all in an uncomfortable position, you don't think it's warranted, I don't have any problem pulling it. But I'm still gonna charge him with some duties of assisting that EMA Department. But he's only gonna do that so long, because he does need some fair compensation for what he, for the contribution that he's made already just in helping EMA.
Ms. Parker?
Okay, I would like to comment, uh... Okay, should, would, if, if we'd had a tornado, and, uh, Mr. Scott would have been the deputy director, then what would we have done differently in the last tornado?
Well, first of all, code red would've gone off ten minutes earlier than it did, which might've saved Mr. Carl Frazier's life. All right? And, and, a de, you know, it's at eleven o'clock at night, people are sleeping. You know, if, if your main guy is asleep in bed and doesn't get the memo, so to speak, who's there to back him up? You know, who, who's the person on call? And normally, in those type of events, before the event happens, communication is vital. Knowing how to operate code red, Ms. Kyle said, "We've yet to do our all-call," which is one of the functions of getting code red ready. We've had eight, nine months and haven't done an all-call, what, what we've got, we're gonna have to do tomorrow. But timely notifications, being able to teach the sheriff and his deputies how to use code red, so that when they see a threatening situation, uh, Mr. Carter in the highway, when he has a road closure due to flood, this person's gonna teach his department how to send out those notifications. So he's gonna teach the school director how to use code red, so that there's, God forbid, an active shooter, an alert can be sent to the proper authorities.
Okay, it's not, the, the constituents that I spoke, have spoken with, it's not that they're particularly against a, uh, position as deputy, but it's the person that has been, uh, that you would like to appoint. And they don't feel like that they can work with him. And I just wanted to make that, uh, that statement for them.
And I do, and I, I've taken that into consideration, and I would say that those people talking to you are not county employees. You see? And so, he...
But they will be working with, with deputy director.
Not necessarily, they will be working with the EMA Director. He's there to assist the EMA Director's mission.
I just want, Mr. Hill, please.
Just an IT?
Just an IT, he gonna finish the information, the website.
So he won't be out there, uh, telling people what to do?
Well, he shouldn't, that's not, that's not gonna be his role. And not only that, I'm appointing the IT Director, who happens to be Mr. Key. But if it was John Doe, I would still be appointing that person as the assist, as the assistant deputy within the EMA.
Would you like to...
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, postpone this until next month, until he can get, uh, a resume for us to...
It takes you on further opinion, further approval?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, you know, she, she said, other people had a problem working with him. If we ask Mo or Richard Key if, how he feels about this, you know, what, what his inside is?
That's what we need to bring up, going down the next month.
We was at the budget committee, and he wasn't for this, he did not have nothing to do with it, when he talked to us at the budget committee. And that's totally fine, but keep in, keep in mind that I'm Mr. Key's boss. And... Well, then if we've got a problem with Mr. Key, we need to settle that problem, instead of trying to cover it up and spending extra money from the taxpayers. Well, who's spending it? That's gonna be in the bu, that's gonna be in a budget. Well, let's vote on it, then, and, and, and so... And so my thing about that is, I expect more out of the EMA Department. All right? And I understand that, I don't disagree with that, but if we've got a problem, we need to face that problem head-on, knocking around back. You, you, in your campaign, you said transparency. When, when all of a sudden we got the deputy director, and nobody knew about it, that's a lot of transparency. Well, keep in mind, two weeks ago, we had a tornado, and... I, I understand that, but, but you're saying, we could've, we could've solved that problem ten minutes earlier, does Mr. Scott not sleep? Does he live in this county?
Yes.
Okay, he's gotta sleep sometimes, who is to say that he would've woke up any faster than anybody else? Part, I mean, all that speculation, part of your duties as an EMA Director, you get, you get a weather warning at least twelve hours before the event. Well, let's vote on it.
When he done pulled it, it's gonna be pulled, let's vote on it.
No, motion to... We need a second.
Mayor gonna pull it, I thought.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor.
Second from Miss Dana. Miss Mary Powers, second. All in favor of pulling?
Table.
It's postponed, it's postponed to next month.
Next month.
Yes.
Motion by Mary Powers, second by Dana Ferguson.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
No, I heard a no.
Yeah, no.
Who got a no?
What's the matter, you got a no now? Roll call. Roll call.
Roll call.
Will you die?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Pulling the correct.
Prostating until next month.
Next month.
Yes.
Gary Farr?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Beakers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Jen Higdon?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
John Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Clancy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion, here to pull, go next, me, roll call. All right, right here on item number twelve, resolution, appointing Rachel Hill to Northwest PAA Advisory Board, representing county. Is motion?
Motion.
Motion for Sonny Hall?
Second, Paula.
Second, Ms. Powers. All in favor? Eyes, no, eyes, here, you're on the board there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, resolution, appointing Sherri Hill and Ken Tapley to the audit committee for a four-year term set to expire March one, twenty twenty-four. Motion?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second, by Jenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
I, yeah, I got, who are these people? Just out of curiosity, I mean, you know, who's Sherri Hill, who's Tim, Ken, Tapley? I don't know who they are, everybody else know who they are?
Yeah, sitting right here, sitting right here.
Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
I'm Ken Tapley, I'm sure all of you remember me from a time when you were voting.
Step up here, Mr. Parker, please. And that's a great view about that, sir, you actually put in here. I don't care. Go ahead, Mr. Parker, give your name again.
I'm Ken Tapley.
Okay.
I'm sure that, uh, you remember me from this position a couple times.
When I see you up there, but I don't know your name.
No, you do.
Now, I know your name, okay, that's great, who's the other person, is she here?
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Hill, please, thank you, Mr. Parker. She is.
But these, these individuals presented themselves to the audit committee, and is the recommendation, recommendation of the audit committee, so...
That's fine, but I still, I don't know who the odds she is, anybody vote for her?
No, no relation.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Here's, item fourteen, resolution, appoint Brad Ferrer to the solid waste board for a three-year term, set to expire on March first, two thousand twenty-three. Motion?
He's here.
He's here, Mr. Parker, would you step up, please, sir? I need a motion for it.
Motion.
I need a motion, Dana, second.
Hold on.
Yes, sir.
Come on, must, sir. Give your name, and, and that's what you wouldn't like, sir.
I'm Brad Barry, I'm a local resident, got a degree in banking and finance, I just want, I was interested in the waste board, and I just figured I would go with that. Any questions, ready?
Any questions, from the commissioners?
Will he be added to the website? Can we not get...
Added to the website?
I think, I think we need to start getting some of these committees and stuff identified, since we're gonna be doing so much IT. I would appreciate that.
Well, uh, thank you, everybody, you have to look, you got, you're top of the tier, I can't...
I actually, I run a business locally, I do pretty printing, I sell it online on Amazon, Etsy, I design stuff on my computer, print up in plastic. I have a little shop in town, I'm on the board, I'd like to, uh, deal with it.
Oh, yeah.
The, the charities have been volunteering at the animal shelter, and they've been, you know, very active.
Yeah, my wife's actually driving back right now from, she's outside of Virginia right now, she drove up to New Jersey to, to take some of our animals up there, to, uh, here, some of our, straighten out our, our hair.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
Did you know, did you know about this position and come to, like, the mayor and ask about it?
Yeah, I knew about the position, I did ask, I wasn't just, like, randomly pick or anything.
Anybody have any, like, other commissioners, questions? And if not, thank you very much, thank you, thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, curious. Item fifteen, resolution for Nestle Farrel and Tracy Chapman to the animal shelter board for a four-year term, set, set to expire March the first, twenty twenty-four. And motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Dana?
Second.
Powers?
Second, Ms. Powers?
And who are they?
I don't speak, uh, I'm.
Tracy Chapman?
I'm not Tracy Chapman, but I'd like to.
Come on up here, Ms. Angie, please.
I'm Ashley Jones, I'm the chairperson of the animal shelter board. The two people named here, Leslie Ferrier and Tracy Chapman, um, are both very heavily involved with the animal shelter. Tracy Chapman is our new animal shelter director. Um, she comes to us with regular experience from work in San Antonio, Texas. Uh, if you follow the animal shelter Facebook page, she's made a number of lengthy posts there that can tell you a lot about her, if you'd like to have a look at that. Um, Leslie Ferrier is the wife of Brad Ferrier. Uh, Brad and Leslie are fairly new to our community, but since they've been here, they've been very active in a variety of, uh, events and things that can start with the community. Uh, for example, the Riverline Project, Leslie and Brad both came out and very involved when they were here and worked on that. Um, they have been very avid loyal volunteers at the animal shelter. As Brad noted, uh, Leslie is currently driving a, a truck back from New Jersey after volunteering to take some animals up there to, uh, afford to have a better chance of getting adopted. Um, so those are, those are who these people are.
Angie, I would like to say one thing, since you've been out there. Uh, our commissioners, myself, this is the first year or so that I've had that the dogs ain't come up to every meeting. So something is not to be happening out there to be good. I mean, we're here, we're transferring the money, but you don't hear the complaints. So I think we've got an outstanding animal shelter myself, what I, compared to what we've been through. Everybody knows, is every meeting what I'm going to do, you know? But since they've been involved, it's been a, running smooth, I'm sure, in some way, because we're not here. Thank you.
I believe that, that was the intent of re-forming the board last year when that was done, not, not last year, but the year before, twenty eighteen, when the mayor proposed reforming an animal shelter board. Uh, that was to serve as an intermediary between community concerns and the county commission. And I believe that the board is serving that function.
You did a great job, I'd like to, thank you.
Um, I, Ms. Mayor, um, that issue that you discussed earlier, can I raise that?
No, we don't need that.
Well, I mean, I'd like, if you could raise that now, so I can go ahead and talk about the next person that we, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the resolution to replace Tracy Chapman with Vicki Penn.
Uh, who? Vicki Penn. Uh, the reason that, the reason we're proposing this.
Good step.
Oh, sorry.
Let me get a second on that.
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Hayes. Come here, let you take a look.
Okay, the discussion on that, uh, information on that is Vicki Penn is a longtime citizen of our community. She is a trained nurse, uh, she's worked at other area, other businesses in our community as well. Uh, Ms. Penn has been volunteering at the shelter for four or five years at this point. Uh, her daughter, uh, Rick Penn worked at the shelter at one time, uh, and now works for Dr. Casper's office of Vatt Tech. Uh, Ms. Penn applied for the director position at the shelter and simply based on the fact that Miss Chapman had more experience, Miss Chapman was selected, but Ms. Penn was a highly favorable candidate. Uh, she has been a very, very devoted and valued volunteer at the shelter. And, uh, upon the request of Mayor Ashley and myself, Ms. Penn considered would she really be sit on the animal shelter board and she agreed that she would be. Part of what we're trying to do there is to move away from having a, uh, and having the animal shelter director be on the board. Uh, simply for the fact of governance, that's, that's kind of a bloody order there. Um, but also for the fact of the animal shelter director has enough to do, uh, without, without also having to take the role of the board, uh, person. So that is the reason that we're, we're going in that direction. But Ms. Ms. Penn has been gracious enough to agree to take that position if she is appointing that. Uh, then that is the reason we would like to have Miss Leslie Ferrier and Miss Vicki Penn as our two new shelter board members.
Thank you, any questions?
So, so we are, uh, replacing Tracy Chapman with Vicki Penn?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, no, curious, thank you. All in men, now need a motion to set number.
Motion as amended?
Thank you.
Ms. Dana? Excuse me? All in favor?
Aye.
Curious, no, curious. Submit. Item seventeen, resolution for Benton County to levy an additional.
Sixteen.
We just hold it on. We done two of them. We're moving on now. Item seventeen, resolution. Resolution for Benton County to.
Give sixteen.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Item sixteen, resolution to rescind resolution two oh one nine, one oh two one dash seventeen, that was approved by the full legislative body in October twenty nineteen. Is a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, Kenny, discussion? Yes, please.
This issue is going to come up on the ballot in August if we do not rescind it, correct?
If it was not.
Okay. If the citizens felt strongly enough that they got the signatures for a petition to put it on the ballot, I think they want their voices to be heard at the ballot. I think as rescinding it, we'll be robbing our citizens of their voice in making this decision.
This is going to be obsolete when you rescind it, it just goes out there, so it's not going to be such a thing. It, it's not going to go here, we're, the mayors are trying.
So this can't be done someplace.
I'm saying, not in this matter, not for time, but it could come back one item at a time, it just done in proper time and it feels, it's good time to rescind it and bring it back, let the people, the reason they rescind, uh, the campaign on the first, they felt like it was rushed on them, it wasn't in the meetings, we suspend the rules of order. And I think that's where we done our fault, if not, we suspended and they never given the blurb. So if it does come back, it won't come back as this group, when it come back, it come through the property committee, back through all the channels and it has to be voted on again.
Okay.
So that's, that's why we rescind it, because, you know, still fighting something, we think we're going to lose it, but it's going after most of the private sector while it's best to.
Well.
Best done.
So I have to move it, Rochelle.
I was going to say, we're probably doing the public actually a favor by rescinding this. We proposed a rescension at the very, at the front, and I maybe did an absence or whatever and failed by one vote. So when it comes to rescension, do you want to necessarily, uh, educate ninety-four hundred registered voters on the intricacies of what you call government financing? And if it's hard enough to educate eighteen commissioners on what government financing is about, how it goes, basically the, the tools and the elements and the ingredients that go with government financing, which is the core component of any long-term investment that the county ever makes, whether it builds a school, whether it builds any type of capital projects, government financing is, is how we do that. And so, we've got coupons rates, we've got market rates, we've got municipal bonds, we've got, uh, capital outlay notes. There's all kinds of different forms of financial tools that the county have, and it's just a, it's a complicated process. So more likely, uh, if this were to go to a vote, it's probably not going to, it probably wouldn't pass, because people are not going to read the entire verbiage and understand what government financing is about, and this would probably hinder our ability in any project that we do going forward. So I think we do the, I think we do the citizens actually a favor by rescinding it and not even worry about it.
I have one more question. Um, if this is rescinded now and it will not be on the ballot, is there, when you put it on the ballot, there's a cost to the county for doing so, correct? If this is removed from the ballot, does it reduce the cost of the election for Benton County? Or is that already passed?
It's not on the ballot yet. The, the county commission has to send the order to the, uh, election administrator to put it, or the election commission to put it on the ballot.
Okay, but is there a cost incurred by the county if we do that?
The one, one thing is, is that this, we can never, we cannot go forward with this, uh, in the format it is, so.
That was right there.
Martin, come ahead, Martin.
Would we be saving the county money significantly if we just rescind this rather than, like, what?
That, that's a good question, I'm glad you asked that question, because it will not be saving the county money on the election itself, because the election's already been paid for. It would just be a simple thing put on the ballot. But if you're going to rescind this bond issue, I say you rescind the project, because it's included in the bond issue. And if you're going to do this project, it's very unethical to rescind this and have how many people sign their petition, say, you don't matter, and we're going to fund this some other way. You need to just do a way of the whole project. Rescind the project.
That's what it's actually do it.
That's what I'm asking you.
It's, it's.
So you're not going to come back next month and say, we're going to have to fund this to a different bond issue, just to get away from the people.
Not in the form it's in.
Well, see, that's what worries me, what you just said, not the form it's in.
Well, keep in mind, that's the projects, uh, this was a financing element for those projects, okay? Now, maybe the way it was worded wasn't the best, and we can pull these projects back and refine them and present them again in more defined manners and how we would pay for it and, and, and fund it. But as far as when you say rescind the project, you know, we got the jail, we got the EMA.
You have every project.
Like, we, we rolled them under one, we all rolled them under one. So when you say rescind the project, I don't mind rescinding the project that was presented in that resolution.
All those projects.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to move forward.
But I'm saying, it's very unethical to have all these people go out and get names against this project in this funding.
Let me get, let me get, that's been, that's been.
Let me finish, wait, Mr. Cool. Let me finish here, wait, Mr. Cool.
All right. He questioned me, got me just on what we're saying.
I'm saying it's very unethical to do that to the taxpayers and voters of Benton County.
Why is that unethical when it was probably presented in an unethical manner to the taxpayers? When you got people standing, when you got people standing, there's a lot of misinformation.
The commissioners do not vote for these projects because the people have already expressed their concern. They've already expressed that they don't wanna fund these projects right now.
But Mark, you don't make the asshole out here to do it. I'm gonna ask you to quit just a minute.
Okay.
I'm gonna let our attorney, who has all the legal terms in his face, say it's fair to show.
Well, I just wanted to say something because it was repeated multiple times, it's unethical.
In my opinion.
Well, let's clarify that, it's unethical in your opinion.
Yeah.
That's fine. It's completely legal and appropriate to do so. Matter of fact, other counties have done this.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. But I don't feel like it's very...
I understand that, and let me finish. What I'm trying to say is, since this is a legal question, I'm giving the legal answer, man, for the county. And it's not unethical, it's not illegal or anything like that. It's actually appropriate to rescind this, and other counties have done this. My research, Attorney General actually was asked about this years ago, and it is appropriate. The other thing is, something, Commissioner Hill has a question about whether this would lose the voice of the citizens. No, it does not. If any issue like this comes up again in the future, say next year, this commission wants to look at this again or any time in the future, the same process is in place. Meaning if the citizens at that point in time want to do a petition, they can do so. And this is...
So you can work on to that until they finally give up and you can do one project that they don't want.
Well, hopefully you're not referring me because I'm not their...
No, you can, you're...
And I understand that, but when you say Mr. Cool or things like that, you talk to me, I'm totally different. I work for the county, I help you and others regularly, so I don't wanna get into arguing.
But you're saying the way you're saying it...
That's what the law provides.
I know the law provides that.
And it says it, and if the law provides it, it's not unethical, it's not illegal or anything. It's not really working people with that, to educating them. If that's what this commission wants to do, choose. If you wanna educate them and file another petition, that's appropriate.
Mr. Ward, can I address, say something?
Yes, sir.
You were talking about that. You're the election administrator.
Yes.
You took place in three public meetings on record, voicing your opinion and assisting those filing the petition. Do you think that was professionally ethical?
I don't know if it is or not, but I don't want to talk to you in that...
But an election administrator taking an active part in an active petition at the time, is that not professionally ethical?
I wasn't an active part in the petition.
Yes, you were, on record in three public meetings. Two city commission meetings and this county commission meeting on record, taking a stance against it. You are the election administrator.
No, I was giving...
While that petition was still active.
I say let's vote.
I say so too, but I would urge...
Back to it, the time we had the last one right there, Mark.
Sir, look, you gotta...
As long as it comes back through the proper committees and comes in, that's why it's...
I just wanted to understand that you...
Everything is legal, and didn't you have your input, Ken?
I've already pulled the project back. Well, like I said, you can do it as many times as you want to until the people get tired of getting the petition up.
So you can still do the project if they're against it.
Mark, you put it out of your soul.
I don't think they're against it.
Oh, Rashawn, is it like that, that...
No, I mean, my thing was, I just wanted to answer Ms. Hill's question and that too, to make sure. It doesn't lose the voice or anything. I wanna answer it from a legal standpoint, answer those questions about whether it's proper or if that nature, I don't think that did that. I don't have a personal opinion about it, but it's for the board, for this commission to decide. I just wanna make sure you all understand that you're doing something that's with the law.
Like Rashawn.
Mr. Roseanne?
Yes, um, I have a question from the others. On the, um, nine-one-one board, are you planning to move forward with the, um, the building for the emergency management system, and you're going to take eight hundred thousand dollars from the E-nine-one, E-nine-one-one board?
We're still funding, we have, we actually have a CDVG grant that we've already committed to that will also build that project.
So you're gonna move forward with that project?
Correct.
Correct.
And we're gonna move forward with part of the sheriff's enhancements. But we're just gonna use litigation of reserve money to try to achieve the addition that he needed to be done to the jail. I believe we actually committed via a body, uh, about two years ago to doing part of those projects for the sheriff and the jail and funding, every which way. Part of that funding was gonna be rolled up into this project that we put forth in the bond. But now we're gonna have to retract and find another way to find those monies to finish those projects that we committed to.
So not just that project, you're gonna find money to go on with the other projects that were?
Yeah, I'm gonna do my best to find the money for that so that we can at least lessen the cost and find an easier form of financing. I mean, if anything, this petition process has taught it, it gave us time, gave us time to try to find additional money that may possibly out there and be smarter and wiser in the way we present it. Uh, obviously, it was a learning lesson for probably a lot of people involved. But I still believe in the projects. We still have to find a way to find an office for UTAG extension. We sure can't keep them in the buildings that they're in. So I propose what I felt was, was not only for better quality of life elements within the county, but also better ways for county government to operate in the properties that it has.
So your plans are, if we rescind this tonight, then that opens the door for you to just move on with the projects?
Well, I still have to fund those projects. I've not stopped moving forth on those projects. The bond is simply the way where we're gonna pay for eight capital projects. The fact that we pull those back and now we do this project with that funding and this project with that funding, that I would say that we put ourselves at a disadvantage by not moving forth on the projects. But how we fund it is what that resolution was for.
Well, I feel like that the citizens, um, they spoke and they said that they didn't want these projects, that they thought this is too big of an expansion.
They didn't want the bonds. They didn't want the bonds.
But it also had the projects going.
But the resolution was how we fund the projects. It wasn't about the project, it was how we funded those projects.
It was to the citizens.
But we spent thirteen, fourteen months also educating about those projects.
Let's vote.
Off question.
I have a question.
Take one comment by Ms. Ashley, one time, and we're going up.
Ms. Roseanne, um, I'm not knowledgeable on the other projects, so I'm not gonna try and make a statement on that. But I will draw one project out, and that is the EMA building. This legislative body approved the CDVG grant. We got that grant, that grant has got, we've got a timeline in order to do that. So that project has to, we gotta get the ball rolling on that one. Now, the rest, I don't have a clue, I don't know. But that CDVG grant, we're stuck to a timeline on that.
I'll answer back. That is different, though, than, excuse me, taking eight hundred thousand dollars from the nine-one-one board. The grant is something else. Taking money from the nine-one-one board is something else.
Um, CDVG grant requires a match. And now how that matches, whether it's by the county or if the E-nine-one-one board votes and approves that, I don't know. I don't go to those meetings.
Mr. Sheriff.
I could share some light on the E-nine-one-one, the eight hundred thousand dollars, if I could speak.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
I talked to the board and they agreed to give the eight hundred thousand dollars, it's in their account. And what they're doing is they're trading that out for rent. I think they, they're gonna sign a thirty-five-year lease, correct me if I'm wrong, and that will pay their money back. So they're gonna get their money back long-term and they'll have a new building. That money, it ain't, it ain't necessarily coming from our general fund, that's their fund it's coming from, and they're gonna recoup their money in rent from the building versus what they're paying now. They're gonna sign a lease on it and they'll be, you know, that building will be theirs for thirty-five years.
And that's a rent-reven?
Well, it'll be a county-owned building, so they would, they would, if they paid rent, it would be paid to the county. But the way they agree into it, they will not be paying one cent to the county. Their rent is being paid up front.
I'm gonna, we've got a call question, we're gonna go ahead and take it.
What grant are they paying?
They, that I didn't ask.
The sheriff's department houses dispatch, and we don't charge them any grant.
There's other things that's in the building over here.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because they don't pay us anywhere.
Right.
I was at the meeting that night. He's right. All right, we're gonna take a vote. No problem. Your vote will be up now, now we're at a clear. This is to rescind. Right.
So if we say yes, we rescind it, we say no, we don't.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make certain.
Mark, we're gonna go to vote, we've done many questions.
I don't think they still understand what you're telling them.
Well, if they vote yes, they rescind it, they vote no, they keep it.
And they keep it and put it on the ballot?
Yeah, put it on the ballot.
And if the people side, and if the people vote no, that it's done, right? Then it's open to...
Well, if they're putting it on the ballot, they have to send the election commission the, the, a resolution putting it on the ballot. They may never put it on the ballot.
A resolution to put it on the ballot, but the people make sense.
So even if it fails, it doesn't mean it goes on the ballot.
Rashawn, just wait a second.
I'm sorry, Sheriff, I know the individual is saying it's done for good, it's not done for good. It can be, as far as bond issue, it can come back up in a later time and then restart the process over again. So it's not, if people think that they're gonna put it on the ballot and vote at one time, it'll be done forever, that's not how the law works, how the process works. Some of those items are really good, you know, some of them ain't worth looking at. But, you know, the way we took it in that, yes, I with the petition, had start petition called, some of the things just didn't make sense for the county. And the people's kind of spoke, it didn't take long to come up with that big signature, if you don't...
Mark, we're gonna, I'm, I'm, Mark, what you're saying, now we're trying to get out of there now, Mark. Mark, we done had a call to vote, let's go.
Was, was the citizen, uh, approved by county commissioners, say?
But after all, we're gonna, you know, they...
Okay. One more time, yes, we put it, no, we put it?
Yes, as a rescind. No, you leave it. Just one.
Kolea Dye? Aron Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Farther?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
No.
Doug Beakers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higden?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Daryl Gibbs?
Yes.
Ronnie Halpern?
Yes.
Larry Cowers, yes. Angie Kern, yes. Don Patton?
Yes.
Diana Bergerson?
No.
Ken Miller?
Yes.
Ford Plant?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
No. I wanna change my yes, please.
Anyone else wish to change their vote? Or no?
Or yes?
Yes.
Motion's here, to rescind.
I'm like a motion, who's kind of druses?
I'll second that one. This is five minutes. Back in three minutes after. They were ready to pass.
I know, this is it.
I just don't want you to say, where is the package? I mean, some of the packages are like, that's what you're making it work on now, and I'm... I'll get it signed up, so I'll be... I really think I've been here today.
So everybody goes watch, what it looks like. But that was a bunch, but I'll see you in this edition. But no one answered me a question, I was sitting there and saying, "Why?"
Okay, you have to vote three now. Okay, so what did you call her? Yes, please?
All right, move the line out of seventeen. Resolution of Benton County to levy the additional penalty tax on the litigation in all civil and criminal cases. In a amount not to exceed fifty dollars per case. To be used for the jail construction maintenance and courthouse construction and maintenance or to retire the debt, principal interest-related expense on the shut jail and construction, courthouse construction and maintenance process. Need a motion? Second.
Thank you.
Second, ten. Any discussion?
Oh, yes, yes.
Second.
I would like to say this, uh, failed in budget. We voted not to recommend this. It, uh, in my opinion, this puts a burden on people that, that are not criminals, that are just coming up here to try to get their rent money back, that's what's paid to them. This, this puts a lot of money and hardship on them. You know, it's, even if they're awarded money in court, sometimes they still don't get it. And then they're out another fifty dollars on top of all that. So my opinion is this, this is just putting a burden on our, on our citizens that are coming up here legally, you know, not criminals. This has nothing to do with the criminals.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
I happen to agree with you on that. And didn't we try to do, didn't we do this last year? We increased the litigation.
We increased ten dollars, I think.
We're trying to increase it again. So this litigation tax, we did maximize that jail, courthouse, workhouse litigation tax to its fullest ability. This resolution that is before you is not implementing a litigation tax. This is changing the private acts to allow Benton County to implement an additional litigation tax if and when they ever chose to at a later period. And that litigation tax would be kept separate, earmarked into a reserve and will only be collected for a time period of whatever project that was gonna be the jail workhouse. And then once that workhouse is completed, that litigation tax is no longer collected.
But we already have that.
No, ma'am. This is a separate...
This is another.
This is a separate...
This is another, yeah. We're taxing people... The state would have to approve it to be done. At least afford it, in my opinion.
So if you pass this resolution, that would allow the state to approve changing the coverage in your private act, then if you ever wanted to implement that jail litigation tax, you would have to approve another resolution to actually implement that and start collecting it.
Rashawn, turn it.
It's my understanding that the, uh, litigation tax imposed on criminal proceedings is already at its maximum.
Yes, this is something separate.
Okay, and to me, this just seems like the criminal is already maxed out. To add any more separately onto that is ridiculous. All that leaves you is the civil litigation, which, as Daryl said, is going to be the people who are least deserving of having to pay. So even though it doesn't enact it now, I, I think it's wrong and we do not need to do this.
Okay, right. Uh, you know, they say, uh, what is it, don't do the crime if you can't pay the time? Best way to avoid the litigation tax is not, not having offense. So, so with this, as you, Mr. Barrett said, that there is a provision in the, in the state to allow the counties to be able to earmark money. Right now, we don't have it. We, we collect, I don't know, eighty thousand dollars a year in litigation taxes. And there really is no allocation of what's going to the jail, what's going to courthouse, those type of functions. So this at least ensures the sheriff's department that if we move forward with the jail workhouse program in the future, because that right there is a multimillion-dollar project, to be able to build a new facility for a workhouse, that's probably, you're looking at something million dollars at least. This gives the county some flexibility to be able to earmark a tax towards the construction of that and maybe we will probably have to go get a bond. But if we don't go get a bond, we can go get a note, and this would allow that to be dedicated for paying that project off. Now, now it's fifty dollars, and you don't have to approve it at the time, but at least it writes it in to the private act that if and when y'all are looking for a funding mechanism, you've got it.
This is more like the future. You're not putting this in the act, but doing it, but you get the state to vote on it that when it does go in there, if you decide to, you can actually change it in the future.
Then I would make the amendment to remove the word "civil" out of it because someone trying to get their rent money collected or to go after someone who cashed a bad check or someone who defrauded them on a building project, I can't see penalizing them even an additional fifty dollars on top of all the other associated costs with civil litigation. I would only vote for this if civil was taken out of it.
Unfortunately, Rochelle, that's TCA, that's state law, that's a tax that's collected through the state that is applied to both civil and criminal. Yeah, so I, I mean, I don't know how we would be able to...
But right now, no civil money goes to the, our current jail litigation tax on just criminal, correct?
No, I think it's on both criminal and civil. I don't know, I'd have to double-check on that.
It is? I thought it's just not criminal?
I think it is on both, no.
And we're at the max right now.
Okay, thank you.
Your, um, litigation tax is basically anyone can touch through the courts.
Well, if the sheriff explained this, the time, and I believe we all kind of voted in somewhat approval to give her okay to move forward with the pair of them, but...
Well, they did vote, that you all did make a motion and vote and approve her drafting this resolution to present to you this month. So that's why it's here.
All in favor, combining?
Aye.
Aye to the left, eyes for no carry. Motion approved as combined.
Motion.
Second?
Second, Ms. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes carried. Line item twenty-two. Resolution transfer funds in amount of fifty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars within the sheriff's department. Favorable line item.
Motion.
Motion.
Second?
Stopper. Second, by Ms. Jenny. Any discussion? For ten.
This failed, uh, law and motion.
What about, um... That's budget.
Hang on, I'm looking at this down.
It passed, but if you don't...
It was recommended.
And explain, pretty much, give somebody explaining on what's... Miss Fisher, please.
This chair has failed on three to vote, and I think the issue, I voted for it, I think the issue was, was that we didn't know exactly what it was, what we were transferring, we just didn't have enough information. Right, that, a- and I'd like to... We had the question brought up, that does it raise maintenance of effort, and nobody had a definite answer, because nobody was at the meeting that knew a hundred percent. And then when we got the budget, we found out that it didn't raise their maintenance of effort, so that's why it passed. Budget.
Just always remember sheriff's maintenance of effort is on positions.
Right, and that's what we found out during the budget meeting, we just didn't have nobody there to...
Any further discussion? If not?
Question?
Question. No call?
This is a board's vote. Board's vote.
It's a board's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eyes carried. No. Line item twenty-three. Resolution appropriate funds in amount of five thousand five hundred and fifty from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay the county medical examiner cremation permit throughout the entire year two thousand nineteen.
Motion.
Motion by Miss Dana.
Second.
Second, Ms. Pinker.
And this is new money.
It's new money. Any discussion?
It was recommended by budget, it says it was provided, it was... He forgot to put it in on his invoice.
Okay, any further discussion? Not?
Yeah, yeah.
So, go ahead, Ms. Pinker.
How much is, uh, how much is the cremat- for cremation?
Continue.
Wow, I like the word.
Yeah, it's in the packet. A hundred and fifty dollars.
Hundred and fifty, is that right?
Yeah.
Dr. Corvus, did y'all check that on that resolution?
No.
Okay, there's gonna maybe in the last resolution, or last paragraph of that resolution. It says year twenty eighteen.
She said twenty nineteen. I make a motion to show again. For being a character of two thousand eighteen.
I second.
Sorry, I think...
The name last year.
Right, no, it says in the entire year two thousand eighteen, it should say two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Have a... Motion by, uh, Ms. Angie.
I second.
Second by Hicks. All in favor?
Aye.
Here, no.
I make a motion that will be approved as amended, okay.
I second the motion, the original motion is second.
Original or the amendment? The change.
I'll motion by Angie first, second by Gerald Hicks.
I have a motion from Miss Dana, as I made.
Okay.
Who's the second?
Second by her.
I second by her. No call vote?
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Ken Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote?
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four, or not resolution, line item twenty-four, resolution appropriate funds in amount of five thousand one hundred seventy-seven in order to pay the back route fees of hotel motel tax. Flexion and revenue avenues.
Motion.
That was a motion.
Second.
Miss Dana, second by Hicks. Discussion?
Oh, we missed one. This was recommended by budget, because this is money that she's already collected, and the money that we paid for what she's collected.
Any further discussion?
I just, I have a question for, um, Ms. Wanda. And Wanda was the part colonial then, were they paying anything at all?
It's all under one nine now, though. But they weren't, no. But now they've got them in six payments.
No further discussion, roll call. Miss Wanda, please.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
Motion carried. Line item twenty-five, resolution appropriate fund in amount of twenty thousand five hundred from the unassigned fund balance within the county general funds in order to cover the remainder of this fiscal year. Communication expense.
Motion.
Motion by Miss Dana.
Second.
Second by Jenny. Discussion?
Is new money?
This was recommended by budget, um, it was found out that we were paying for two private lines. We had currently ceased paying for those, so the cost should go down. They're also investigating why it was so high in the first place, but we do not budget enough in that current line item for here, and we did, this is everybody's communication, not just one office.
No further discussion. Miss Wanda, no call.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Line item twenty-six. Resolution appropriate fund in amount of two thousand from the unassigned fund balance within the drug control fund one twenty-two in order to cover the trustee commission line items for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion.
Motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Jenny. Discussion?
Is this new money?
It was recommended by budget, um... Maybe Hicks could explain this one, you had made a statement on it, um... Something about the reason, the fees had went up?
Yeah, the, the fees they collected went up, so... The way it was explained to us, this is a good thing, Ashley can explain it like way better, not me.
Okay, maybe Ashley can take the...
So, each fund has to, on their book, on their books for bookkeeping, has to report a trustee's commission as an expense based on one percent of the revenue that is collected. And it's been like this forever, because in the years past, trustees' commission that was collected based on revenue actually paid your trustee. However, that doesn't apply to us anymore. The state sets the trustee's salary, Benton County budgets for it. But, we still collect a one percent trustee's commission based on that revenue that's collected. So, each month, when the books are balanced, that trustee's commission still has to hit as an expenditure. But it, basically, we're appropriating out of our fund balance, putting it into an expense account, and it's going right back into our fund balance.
The trustee has collected more money than he thought he has, this is a good problem.
She, and she...
Sorry.
She has collected more revenue in, uh... All of our, all of our funds. So, don't forget when you see the next resolution for county general fund.
It also is a good problem.
It is, yes, but this money that is being appropriated is not actually being an expenditure paid out somewhere. It's just coming from fund balance into an expense line and going right back to your fund balance.
Yeah, thank you.
No further discussion, no call, please.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Line item twenty-seven. Resolution appropriate in amount of three thousand from the unassigned fund balance within fund one seventy-one capital project in order to cover the trustee commission line item for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion.
Motion by Dana.
Second by her.
Second by her. Discussion?
Is this new money?
It was recommended by budget, could I get Ashley to explain?
Same thing.
It's the same thing.
Same, same process that applies for this resolution and the next one.
No, no further discussion, Miss Wanda, roll call, please.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Line item twenty-eight. Like, like same thing, resolution appropriate funds in amount of one hundred twenty thousand from the unassigned fund balance of the county general fund in order to cover the trustee commission line item for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Motion.
Motion by Frasier.
Second by her.
Second by her. Discussion?
It was recommended by budget, and it's the same process.
No further discussion, no call.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
I'll bring it with that.
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin? Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yeah.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson? Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
Period, line item twenty-nine. Resolution appropriate funds in amount of one thousand five hundred and ten from the court room security reserve of county in order to install six new panic buttons throughout the courthouse.
Motion.
Motion by Dana.
Second by her.
Second by her. Discussion?
New money?
New money.
It was recommended by budget?
Recommended by property.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
Period. Line item thirty. Resolution appropriate fund in amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred dollars from the unassigned fund balance within the highway department fund in order to remove, or order to move forward with the property purchase and renovation for that new highway department.
Motion, Frasier.
Motion, Frasier, second by Jenny. Discussion?
It was recommended by budget, um, but Carter did discuss that, um, new computers and software and other equipment would be bought, um, tents and other contracted services, maintenance on building, and um, seven thirty-two is just the path for money.
Any further discussion?
The highway board highly recommend this.
I want to make this on the board. No call.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Both, yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
You know, wish to change your vote? Motion carries.
And those are the end of... Spending the rules of order that we do, I have, uh... Line item thirty-one, I have, uh, according to no reach, I have Ashawn T. Hatler, Sabrina Mary Watts, Tina Allen, Amarche Dane Noel, Tiffany Dickle Lee, and Melissa Renee Hoop. Ha.
Motion.
Motion by Dana.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hill. Any discussion? Not? Roll call.
No.
And that roll call, Dana. All in favor?
I make a motion, we suspend the order. Does everyone always discuss what?
Line item twenty-two.
Okay.
Do you make a motion to suspend?
Yes. I was saying that motion.
Second by Ms. Hill.
Which is different.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miss Dana.
I make a motion. We have three, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three from the school, and all it is is basically moving money around. And I find that in high state, we combine all three of them.
I'll, I'll second that.
I would like to say on my behalf, on, on what we're doing right here, I mean, we're stepping in, spending a lot of money right here, just not went through any committees.
It's just combining the three of them?
Well, that's what she made a motion do, but just remember this has not went through no committees. This is...
Yeah. I was going to make a motion to send these through committees.
Mr. Florence, he's still here, he could, he could shed some light, shed some light on this. We did talk about it during budget, it was an oversight, somebody didn't get their paperwork in, I don't know who it was, don't, don't matter, but he explained to us, because when we done our, our, uh, meeting, he asked us why it wasn't in there, and then we told him what in our, he didn't realize that until that meeting night.
But isn't it just basically moving money?
Um, well, actually, you know, because this one is an appropriation.
Which one?
Your first one, resolution twenty, you need to do them separately, because twenty-one is an appropriation, twenty-two is a transfer, and twenty-three is budgeting.
First of all, I think we met on March the second, the school board. Um, I don't have any of you use email very often, but I know quite often I'll send an email, and then somebody will say I didn't send it, and I will get to the ground. I showed up at the budget committee meeting, I had the budget committee, and at the end, I was, where's our resolution? So, um, real quickly, um, you know, there, there's some insurance, there's that just money when they broke into, um, our maintenance shop. The hundred thousand out of fund balance is to assist purchasing the highway department, um, for, uh, bus garage. Um, as Mr. Carter and I said from the beginning, this is no way it affects owner operators, I hope we always have owner operators, but um, I've been director of school since seventeen, we had fourteen owner operators, and I started, we're down to six. That's just reality, we, we continue to try to find those. Um, I did have one commissioner ask me about the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, why we can't wait till next year. Um, now with coronavirus, I don't know what's going to happen with textbook adoption, but the reason we moved that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because history has always, our teachers give them materials and all. That's just always the way it's been. Probably the biggest decision that we've made with curriculum in, in the twenty-seventy years I've been in the school system. And we met with our supervisors, I talked to the school board, and if we have that money in place, and we adopt our new, um, English language, um, art textbooks, then as soon as we adopt them, the company has assured us that we can purchase them. So, if we don't go ahead and move that money, we're going to put our teachers right back where we have for years, so this is just supporting our teachers, so this is pulling it out of fund balance, but those are the reasons that we're moving that amount of money.
Would you change your vote?
It's out of fund balance, so it's no room really.
Okay, all three of them are now.
The only new money is the insurance funds, um, before they were broken into our maintenance shop, and that's just money that's set back from the union company, so it doesn't change maintenance directly that way.
When Dana says new money, and I only know this because I've worked with her for so many years, she does not, she means an appropriation.
Okay.
Even if it was not new money and sitting in a reserve, she always refers to an appropriation as new money.
Right, it would be adding money to the current budget.
Is what she should say instead of new money every time.
All right.
An appropriation.
It would not affect maintenance.
I've been doing it too long, I have been.
Any, any questions, and, and again, um, that's nobody's fault, but my, that type of work, I'm not sending.
What I'm trying to do for Carter, this thing's been done because of the books, he didn't, the teachers. We can't stop them. But we have trouble, I have trouble, because we got no list bond issue. And he did go for the committee, and he said, man, I don't spend that kind of money, so I want to urge everybody to try to get them in where they do go to the right place, because that a way the assistant has a a way to hear you, you know, I feel we got...
Well, to my knowledge, that might be, if, if we thought it was sending, and obviously, I was here, and it was just an oversight, but when there's an oversight, it's my fault. You want to hear me say aye very often, but if there's a mistake, it'll be my fault.
I would like to say, state for the future, it's any way we do it, it's just...
I would like to say, I, I would like your support on this, it is for our teachers. If you get the books after August to learn the material to teach to your, to the kids, um, it's just, it's a hard, yeah, it's very hard.
Very hard, if you ain't got the education yourself to start reading, start. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, thank you all.
I took back, uh, combining them, but we're doing them one at a time.
I'm going to ask you, you watch your tone.
I took back to combine them, but we're doing them one at a time.
Resolution twenty-one. English language art textbook adoption of twenty-twenty will need to be purchased, purchased by building, construction, the highway department for the bus garage, the, uh, hundred thousand, wait, roll call.
Willa Dye?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bakers?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higgin?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hayes?
Yes.
Ron Conover?
Yes.
Mary Tyler?
Yes.
Maggie Turner?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Clannan?
Yes.
You know, we should change your vote.
Resolution twenty-two. Lost by the school board, our school Mark Flory, state reference, budget committee. Estimate expenditure was not enough to meet the necessary expenditure for certain supplementary item in the primary series in the school budget. Any motion?
But before I ask that, did we give a first and a second on the question?
You did on that first.
We got... You said...
You had your hand up.
Oh, okay. All right.
You forgot where you went, baby.
I did.
I need a motion on this.
Okay.
Motion by Don and second by...
Don's second.
Exactly. Yeah. Any discussion? No discussion, no call, please.
Layada?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fard?
Yes.
Sonny Hall? Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higginson?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Hayes?
Yes.
Sonny Conover?
Yes.
Mary Tyler?
Yes.
Maggie Turner?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ward Clannan?
Yes.
You know, we should change your vote.
Thank you, motion taken. Resolution twenty-three. Maintenance shop was broken into, and two of them were stolen from the shop. Tennessee Rispman had reimbursed the board for the stolen items. Motion, motion of Miss Dana. Second of Mr. Pat. Discussion. No discussion, no call.
Layada?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fard?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Janet Higginson?
Yes.
Roseanne Warren?
Yes.
Daryl Hayes?
Yes.
Ronnie Conover?
Yes.
Mary Tyler?
Yes.
Maggie Turner?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Ward Clannan? You know, we should change your vote.
Ladies, Miss Hill, come again.
Oh, I have other business before you, too.
Let's get it out.
Okay. Um, last month, there was a resolution, uh, two zero, two zero, zero, two one eight twelve, asking to appropriate funds, you know, of twenty-three, nine oh seven, from the jail litigation tax fund. And we postponed that to such a time as bids could go out, and the property committee could receive sealed bids and make a recommendation. So that process has happened. The property committee opened the bids. There are three contenders, and I would like to make a motion for us to make a decision on those bids so that the boiler at the jail can be replaced before it decides the one.
I second that.
Just one second. I'm at the edge. Frank, you got any report on that?
All right, we are... As property goes, we are short our minutes, but that's okay. All right, the good news is, we took the three bids. We did open them. Uh, we got... We've come in significantly lower than the twenty-three thousand. We've got a bid from Cully organization out of Eager County for fifteen thousand, seven hundred, ninety-seven dollars. That is our little bid. There is two other bids above that. One's out of Big Sandy. He was the higher of the three bids, and I don't have his number, I apologize.
He wasn't the higher of the three bids, he was the second.
Yeah, he was like a thousand dollars more. And that's the list of all the bids.
All right, the lowest... Lowest bid actually come in with three separate bids, so we had to weigh out what those were. The Cully McCantle has fifteen, seven, ninety-seven. United McCantle had a bid system in fifteen, nine, eighty, seventy-seven. Paul DePlum, out of... Soon Big Sandy come in sixteen thousand, eight hundred, sixty-five dollars. And they were the high bid.
But they wasn't if you compare them side by side?
All right, so we went into gallons per hour.
Right.
And the eighty-five gallons come in at a more efficient unit within six gallons of what the existing unit is. And that's why we went there. So part two of that is, if we want to split some apples, the bid packet from Big Sandy was not complete. It did not have a bond or five percent check of this bid amount. Neither one would have been acceptable. The other two did come in with their bonds.
But you said he was going to waive that if he does something...
If he presented the check with five percent to the mayor's office. I'm not aware of a five percent check being presented.
Well, he wouldn't present it till he was awarded the bid, correct?
No, sir, it's supposed to be turned in with the pack. But then again, he's still higher than Cully McCantle. Six gallons, based off of gallons per hour is what we went through. And we're all within a thousand bucks here, basically, okay? So that's up to everyone to decide. Property committee's endorsement was the Cully McCantle bid. And we want to present that to the commission. So that needs to be amended on through the resolution, the dollar amount, correct? As a motion, if you give it to the floor?
Is this it?
No, ma'am, that is another subject that I will just send tonight.
Tom, can I ask you a quick question? Um, this resolution originally appropriating reserves for this project, it was pulled last month. Instead of like some pound or table, can they still bring that same resolution?
I don't know that we can.
They did not. So actually...
So now make y'all aware of the dollar amount. So I guess...
So now we need to do a resolution?
I guess I put a resolution next month and present it. That was not my intent. I was expecting to see the full resolution back tonight and just do an amendment. But I didn't see it.
That way in the resolution... He's saying that, bring that resolution up this month also.
Right.
What happened, the sheriff advised that if it tore up, we're going to fix it. We got to, it's emergency. But he was to bring it back tonight, give them time to work out the bugs or whatnot. It's a thing, Frank, we got to fix it, that's all we do.
Keep in mind, we're now going on the third month of by the state saying it needs to be replaced. And like I said, I've inspected it, and I know it needs to be replaced. Okay, so we do what we want to do. But I'll sit down on this particular issue.
So... You're saying you think we can replace that, what you're saying? Your best experience?
I tried last month to make an amendment to approve up to the twenty-three thousand that he had asked for, and it did not fly.
So what are you saying it is? Didn't get that in your case?
The property committee recommended the fifteen thousand, seven ninety-seven by Cully McCantle.
By Cully.
But this is a matter of order. We don't win to prove something, we fix.
Are we allowing inappropriate... Make a new resolution?
That's what we can't fault, so we still...
We really need to have a resolution on this.
Is it safe, or you're saying you're moving away from?
Well, no, you can't appropriate money from the floor. It has to be... An appropriation has to be done by resolution anyway, but yeah. We really can't do anything.
And we're going to give him permission to replace it. It's a price we can fix. That's right. It's a common just that they did.
Yeah.
An emergency. Go ahead, Sheriff.
Can I just say this, just like we did last month? Whatever this company is that he's talking about, if this thing goes out, can I contact him?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be an immediate...
Yes, sir.
That's the lowest bid we got.
Mr. Chair.
And how y'all want to do it, I just want to know, I just...
Go ahead, Miss Hicks.
We can vote on who to pick, not the money.
Right, and then we can... You are aware that this transaction is going to be taking place, and we'll make sure that we do the bookkeeping and appropriate the funds.
Okay, can I change my motion? Or do I need to amend my motion that I just made from the floor?
Pull it, make another move.
Okay, fine, I pull that. I'd like to make a motion for the commission to approve the property committee's recommendation for the company to use to replace the boiler at the jail.
If it... Vote before you bring the next resolution.
Yes.
I second.
Second, Miss Hicks. All in favor? I... I take motion Hicks.
Ben.
No, no notice. Have a motion in a second, we get voted.
Yeah, the motion she made, we voted on was for Cully McCantle saying...
Oh, I did.
I mentioned Hicks did it.
Right.
The dollar amount will be approved next month.
Right.
They're not going to spend it, now they just got the motion, because this probably something breaks. So it's...
Breaks.
Something you go back with it, it's a no break.
I have one more thing, I am so sorry.
Come on, ma'am.
Okay, um, the county commission approved United McCantle to replace two water heaters for seventy thousand, for seven thousand thirty dollars. After they did the work, they sent me a letter with the bill saying that they made a mistake, and they should have priced it two thousand more. The reason this is not a resolution is because the sheriff is not recommending it. What the sheriff told them was, all we can do is put it in front of the county commission. They will do what they want with it. The sheriff is not asking for this or recommending it. It's just that the company sent it with a letter saying, we made a mistake. We ordered the wrong water tank. Uh, they went ahead and did the work, but afterwards they said that, you know, they're a small company, and this hurts them. And I told them, I have no control of this. The county commission approved the dollar amount. That's what you gave us an estimate. That's what they want, you know, they can hold you to that. But they asked me to at least put this in front of the commission.
I see it loud, I'd say. Come in. All right, this reads two more water heaters. So I'm under the impression that you got the original two that we voted for, and then two others have been ordered since then.
No, last year, we got two water heaters.
And then it says two more were installed.
This year.
This year. With which did come before the commission.
Well, it did.
The first two did, not the second two.
Last year, two came before the commission, they approved it, they replaced it. When these two needed to be done in this fiscal year, they priced it based on the last. They did not physically look at the water heaters, which they shouldn't have done. So they just priced it the same, and that did come before the commission.
Question, was this in an email form or question for them to bid this? Was this sent out in email form to them? To ask them to bid it? The reason I'm asking is they're indicating that they were, uh, the same. Let me see if I can find my...
It says that we...
Of the same type. Two more water heaters of the same type. Did we send them an email telling them that two more water heaters are the same type? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, no. They were... They were here doing something else, and the gentleman said, well, let me look at the next two. You know, the two that the maintenance man was saying was, were getting worse. And when they called us back, they said we can do it for the same price. So that's what the sheriff put in the resolution.
That's their thing?
They're stuck with it.
Okay. Well, but I did tell them I would just put it in front of you guys, but it's your business. I told them I would put it in front of the commission.
Mr. Blake, if you'd like to say something to the chairman?
Uh, I would say, quickly remember, if we have a confirmed case of the coronavirus, I'm probably going to look at issuing some type of local state of emergency. We'll have some directed gym for our local departments, what they'll do, what the department heads may have to do. So keep that in mind. Another thing, I want to talk about the resolution to appoint Mr. Scott Hill as a deputy. It's really probably not needed. I will have a talk with Mr. Keith tomorrow. And, uh, as a result of that conversation, I'm sure he's going to highly recommend Mr. Hill as a deputy. We are in the tornado run approaching, and I'm not going to wait for an event to hit before we realize the importance of having a right-hand man. So Mr. Keith will be jumping for joy tomorrow and highly endorse Mr. Hill as his deputy. Second, we just spent eight hundred thousand dollars without blinking an eye. It went through just like a hot nitrogen butter. It was yes, 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 yes. Based upon the premise that we've got it in our checking account. Now, I'm supportive of Mr. Carter relocating. I do believe he needs out of his water code. But I also believe Ag Extension and Commodities needs out of their water code. I also believe that E nine one one and EMA need out of their mold-infested building. Okay? I also believe we need some renovations in this courthouse in the future. I think we need to improve our annex. I think we need to improve Sheriff Christopher's operating conditions over there. All right? So if y'all prefer me just come in here with a cash request, I can do that. I mean, we've got the money in the bank to achieve it. So if y'all prefer me just asking you to write a check, I'll do that. All right? Because I'm going to look forward on those projects. I suggested that we do it via financing over a twenty, twenty-five year period, because interest rates are at an all-time low. You cannot leverage your money any more than financing. But obviously, you've told the citizens of Eager County, if you don't mind spending eight hundred thousand dollars with a yes, 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 okay? So just keep in mind, the concepts are the same. The money being spent is the same. We can either pull it from our cash accounts like we did the ninth, or we can finance it. Two different ways of achieving the ultimate means that we want to achieve. So you either believe in improving our county buildings and our county properties, or you don't. But I'm not stopping, I'm moving on those forth on those projects that I have a resident problem, okay? That's all I got to say.
The three hundred and fifty thousand that we approved for the highway department was money, was, uh, grant money that he got for the bridge he built, was being repaid for it. Now, if you think that was spent unwisely, you ought to tend to over highway making.
I didn't say it was spent unwisely. In fact, I was supportive of doing what we... What he's proposed to do.
Well, I mean, you're throwing it up like you...
Well, if I go get you two million dollars in grant money, what's the difference?
Why should you?
Officer Trump.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Officer Trump.
Trying to get some in under last business that we've got to attend to.
Go ahead.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, if y'all hang on to that. That piece of junk jail that was built a few years ago is coming apart. So I brought this up last year, bringing it up again, because our camera system is like a break down. We have to have it. IT man came in, looked at all of it, and he said, basically, I've got it junked where it'll work right now. Haven't had it replaced. We've got three bids. Two of them backed out, said the job is too big for them. The cable is going to run six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, seven cents. And the camera system inside the jail is going to cost three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars each. And the outside camera system, when we need it, once we get the fence up around the back, it'll cost another two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And this, that inside the jail is going to have to be fixed right now. We've got the money under our jail litigation money, but it has to be fixed.